For everyone's benefit, three of the council members are in chambers and so what we'll do is when we open the public hearing, we'll go into closed session. Mr. Barron, maybe you can be a co-host and you can lock the Zoom link and then we'll lock the chamber door as well.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's okay. The only thing I worry about, Chip, this is just a niggling thing. Maybe you could help with this. The only thing I worry about is there are actually cameras in the chambers. And I don't think that the chambers are actually particularly secure. So, you know, I know, you know, usually we go downstairs and I think that's a better solution, but I know that we're sort of half and half and whatnot. So if you could make sure there's nobody downstairs in the video room while this is going on, I guess that's the only place that it could be seen. That would be good. And don't you stay in the video room either?
No, sir, no, no, but I will be available if you need me. Ms. Levin has, she'll be presenting, so she'll be co-host as well. And Mr. McEwen, who is one of Mr. Pyrex's partners, will be with us today, not in closed session, but from my evaluation, but he'll step out as well and we'll come back at 4:30.
So, Chip, I thought this was all supposed to be Zoom, so I'm really confused.
Yes, ma'am. Three council members did not see that it was Zoom, so they're in chambers.
Okay. Well, I would have been there too if I'd known. I can't hear you, Karen.
The sound in here is reverberating a lot.
Why don't the three of you go to empty rooms in the, in the City Hall and just be separate? That would be a better solution than being in the chambers.
Yeah, I can leave my office. That's certainly available.
Why can't the three of us could be together in your office?
Sure, 100%, absolutely. I have snacks in here and water and... Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest that you open the public meeting and then we'll adjourn to closed session. And those of us are not involved in closed session will either leave the physical premises or drop out. As I was saying, Ms. Levin is a co-host. She'll be presenting. She's got presenting authority. And then we'll make Mr. Barron the co-host so we can lock the Zoom room.
How do I lock the room?
At the bottom, there'll be a, it looks like a shield. Yeah, and you'll, and you just toggle up on that, sir, and it says lock.
Okay, got it.
We can, we can barely hear you, Mr. Mayor.
I will open the regular section of the September 13th, 2022 Council of the City of Carmel by the seat. Can I get a roll call, Nova?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Here.
Councilmember Tice?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Here.
All are present.
All right, we're going to adjourn to closed session for Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Preserving the Government Code, Section 5495.7, title say administrator. We will be reconvening at 4:30 for open session. Thank you.
Hi, Nadine.
Hello.
Hi, Nadine.
Hello. How's everybody?
Great.
Good.
Wait, why is the sound coming out?
It's a nice day here in Carmel.
Good.
The sound is coming through the chambers.
We have to sign in.
Hey, guys.
Hey, can you ask the people, ask the tech people to remove the chambers from the meeting?
All right, Nova, can you do that? So you've got Karen in the waiting room. Did you just admit her?
I just admitted her, but I'd really like to not have the chambers in here. Is Karen going to be on her iPad?
Yeah, except I can't turn my sound off. This is...
We can hear you.
I can go on the other one.
You can't mute?
I tried. It just goes to low.
All right. Can we hear everybody? Nadine, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Yes. I'm sorry for the confusion, but honestly, I thought we were doing this in person. I thought Nadine was the only one calling in, so there's...
This is not, I can't turn.
Are we going here?
Quit beating up your computer, Karen.
Turn the camera's off because...
Hi, please. Your back is rolling.
All right, now, here you go. Here's your chair. Everything you've had.
This is for me?
Yeah.
I didn't bring anybody.
I just wanted to, but I just couldn't.
Yeah. Over the next couple of years.
But some of the stuff is real online, isn't it?
Yeah, you can watch the center online.
Yeah.
Some of them were very good.
Oh, there's all clients.
Very good.
A lot of clients, a lot on home, a lot on G and R numbers.
Oh, yeah, I imagine for the housing.
Mm-hmm. I got these. These.
Okay.
These.
Right there. Okay, so.
Oh.
But we were disappointed in their reception. They charged for cocktails at the Burke Receptionist class.
Oh, thank you.
You had two free ones they needed to pay after that. We gotta bless each other.
Now you look familiar, Katie.
Right as soon as that council member, Tyce shows up, we'll get rolling.
Did you die from it?
I flew.
Well, Nova, do you have water?
Yeah.
Did Jim Lewis speak?
Did Jim Lewis from Pismo speak?
Jim Lee from Toledo.
Did Jim Lewis at the conference speak? He's from Pismo Beach.
No.
He's the manager.
I didn't hear him anywhere.
Maybe he just goes to the January. Hello.
All righty, Councilmember Tyce is in the room. We can now commence the balance of today's meeting. We're going to the open session. It's four thirty plus now. We are still Carmel by the Sea City Council. It is still September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Nova could call the roll, except she's not here.
I'll call the roll, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't you call the roll, Chip?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tyce.
Here.
Councilmember Felido.
Here.
Councilmember Barron.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Richards.
Here.
And Mayor Potter.
Here.
All right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well done, as always. All righty, so we have an extraordinary business. We have proclamation declared September twenty twenty-two as childhood cancer awareness month in the city of Carmel by the Sea. Neither Chip nor I are able to read this resolution without crying or getting teared up. My sister died at the age of five of leukemia. So Bobby, if you could read this, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. With honor, whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable, and whereas each year one in one hundred ninety children in our community will be diagnosed with cancer, and whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined, and whereas during the ongoing COVID nineteen crisis, Jacob's Heart has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported by steadfastly adhering to the following commitments. Excuse me. Parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved of financial fears and be able to focus attention on their children. No children undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And no seriously ill children in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. And whereas Jacob's Heart holds the memories and honors the legacies of hundreds of children from our local community who have been lost to cancer, ensuring that their memories will never be forgotten. And whereas the oncology department at Lucille Packard's Children Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacob's Heart for the past twenty-four years as a trusted community partner in providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical, and financial struggles of families of children with cancer in Carmel by the Sea. And whereas it is important for all Carmel by the Sea residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the lives of the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Bobby Richards, on behalf of Dave Potter, Mayor of the City of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Carmel, hereby declare September twenty twenty-two as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Carmel by the Sea. Do hereby honor Jacob's Heart Children's Cancer Support Services for outstanding support to our community and acknowledge the organization's contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Bobby, thank you very much. A lot better than I could have done. Much appreciated. All right, Chip, why don't we then go on to receive a report from the Status of the City Council's Strategic Priorities? In fact, this is a report only, I believe.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, it is. And just for everyone's benefit again, we'll take public appearances after this item. So public comments, and then just introduce Mr. McEwen. He's our city attorney for today. He's a partner of Mr. Pyrex and Ms. Katie. Ms. Katie is our city attorney for labor purposes, and she's with us today when we get to those items later in the agenda. So Nova, if you could queue up the presentation, please. You know, I'm really pleased to give this report, and I'm honored, quite frankly, because a lot of the heavy lifting, all the heavy lifting has been done by my partners in the department heads and the staff who really took what the council directed just a few months ago, six months ago. And these were the goals that we created, the priorities we created back in March. And this is an update on them. So again, there's a written report. Have any answer any questions? The department heads can answer any questions that I can't, and I can pepper the, I think pepper the conversation with some more information, not just anecdotal information about where we are with some of these things based on the questions that I've received at council heretofore. So, thank you. Thank you, Nova. Next slide, please. So again, I'm going to give you a brief background again. I just did that. We'll talk about the status of projects. We'll talk about the next steps. The next steps really are, we're going to, I'm going to request that we reconvene after the election and with the new council. And as you know, Councilmember Tyce is not running again, so one new member is a new council. And we'll take a look at what we've accomplished just a few months from now, and we can add to the list, hopefully. And so that's really kind of the next steps. And again, any feedback that you have for me. Just by way of background, we've been working on this. The council created a mission statement, a vision statement, value drivers. And again, about a year ago, we created a list of sixty projects. We cooked that down because sixty projects is basically almost one per staff member. Too many, too many priority, high priority projects. We cooked it down to a more manageable list than, just again, about six months ago, we focused on a top sixteen. And that's really what I want to focus on. I did add, or Brandon actually created this PowerPoint for us, but I did add the remaining fourteen as a slide if you want to talk about those. But I've always felt like that next level, the next level, the fourteen, would be ones that you could choose from to move up into the high priority. Sixteen's a pretty good number. You know, about a dozen and a half is a good number to really target for, you know, a nine to twelve month period. Next slide, please, Nova. We created a tracking tool. Some of you have asked whether you can have access to this. We certainly can give you read-only access. We don't want you going in there and changing something to a hundred percent, please. But again, this is, this is something that department heads use to update the projects. It's a live document. And again, we're happy to share this with you. So you can always use this as reference and then ask myself or the department heads for more in-depth updates with questions that you may have as we, as we kind of delve our way through the projects themselves. Next project, next slide, please. So again, I'm going to go through the top sixteen. The first is, and these are no, these are, these aren't, number one is not the highest priority. But you have the PowerPoint presentations at the dais for you as well, council. So the first one is looking for opportunities for enhanced fire ambulance service. This is again trying to negotiate a new contract with the city of Monterey for our fire protection services. It's our fire department. And then look at opportunities to combine our paramedicine program with the city of Monterey. That has been going well. You know, part of the challenge is that we had a staff member interim Police Chief Director of Public Safety who helped us for, I don't know, six or nine months. Mr. Ward's been here for, I don't know, a hundred and twenty days or so. So getting new staff up to speed on these types of things as well. So again, at this point in time, we're waiting for a proposal from the city of Monterey. And Chief Panhold was not here, but again, we anticipate that we'll receive that in the next month or so. And so we can finalize those agreements, hopefully toward the end of the year. I will tell you as well that the city of Monterey got new staff. What a surprise. And their finance director and personnel, HR director said, well, you know, what's the history of these contracts? They go back to twenty twelve, since we consolidated services with the city of Pacific Grove and the airport and the city of Monterey, obviously. And so they're doing a little analysis themselves to determine whether it's fair and equitable, not only to the city of Monterey, but to all the member agencies as well. So that has unfortunately slowed matters a little bit. The second is the sign ordinance. This is again, we routinely, I don't know if Councilmembers Richard and Mayor Potter, when I go to conferences, people come up to me and say, how do you have such beautiful signs? Well, part of it is because of our sign ordinance, of course, and our design guidelines. So this was a real necessary endeavor that the planning, the planning department and the Planning Commission took on. So that's a completed project. Prepare a climate and action adaptation plan. Again, this is a completed project. An ad hoc committee of Councilmember Tyce and Councilmember Barron, with the support of Anya Smartallet and Bob Harari over there and others, worked very, very hard on that plan. That plan will serve as a roadmap for future capital work, for future planning work. It's a very, very valuable document. The next high priority project on this list is develop a forest management plan. We have a forest management plan. And update the tree ordinance. And as you know, we did, Ms., our city forester, Sarah, did apply for a Cal Fire Grant. We were awarded that grant. The council accepted that grant. We did an RFP for the, for the work. And you awarded that contract just last month to Davie Resources Group. And they're going to begin the ten thousand tree, city tree inventory with some technical reports. And again, next month, hopefully it starts raining a little bit, we'll begin our annual tree planting. And the first phase of that is to plant a hundred and eight trees. So this is again a very active project. It's something that we need to do. It pulls in a lot of elements that come from the Climate Action Plan. Obviously, with the climate changing, our big four species, Monterey Cypress, Monterey Pine, Coast Live Oak, and Redwood may not be the trees that are preferable for our city for all time, again, because of climatic changes in our natural environment that may preclude those trees from thriving in the community. Of course, this forest management plan will also look very closely at our natural areas, Mission Trail Nature Preserve, Pescadero Canyon, our open space areas, Rio Park, and other areas. And again, come up with a plan that we can implement through your capital work to make sure that we maintain our urbanized forests and care for it very, very well. Because it is really one of the key character-defining features of our village. The next item is to update the zoning code and design guidelines. This is again for both commercial design and for residential. So again, the zoning code gives us our dimensional standards, setbacks, height, floor area, et cetera. The design guidelines are things that we want to encourage. We want to encourage authenticity in design. We want diversity in architecture, all those, all those types of things that help guide and again preserve the character of our village. So we drafted a paper a few months ago. The council, each of you appointed a steering committee. That is a Brown Act body. So we have posted notices. Those are public meetings. Mr. Swanson is the leader of that group and facilitates the steering committee process. That steering committee are representatives of the community. So they speak on behalf of the community and of, on your behalf as the individuals who appointed you council. Our next community workshop is in October. And again, the position paper and the feedback that we've already received from the community will be presented to the public. We want to continue to touch base with the public, continue to touch base with the Planning Commission, continue to touch base with the council to ensure that we're on track with things. And then again, the last bullet there, you know, part of, part of what we talked about at the strategic planning meeting a couple of months ago was reestablishing our design review board. And what the council decided at that point in time is they wanted to make that a naturally, a much more natural, organic, potential outcome of our design traditions work. So I added that last bullet. The potential for DRB will come out of this work, and hopefully we'll get a clear indication from, again, our decision-makers and members of the public about the value of a design review board. Next slide, please. Develop a wireless ordinance. I have no idea what this one's about. So, no, this is a wireless telecommunications. I think the council's goal talked about having a wireless ordinance that was consistent with state and federal law. This is about forty-five percent complete. Mr. Swanson, better part of judgment and valor, this was potentially going to Mr. Swanson, better part of judgment and valor, this was potentially going to be reviewed by the Planning Commission tomorrow night. That has been continued to October, November, so we can do more outreach and education with, with the cell tower group that's developed within the community and potentially with the author of their ordinance. And look, and, and, you know, have, have our attorneys sit down with, with their attorney to see whether there's opportunities to include elements of, again, Mr. Campanelli's ordinance into our ordinance and ask questions about why some things are not in each ordinance. So, really take some extra time before presenting this and hopefully come out with a better product. That's certainly the goal. The next item is filling vacancies. Ms. Gulo is out in the gallery, and again, we've celebrated this, not to death yet, but I'd like to. 31 positions filled in 12 months is just a phenomenal rate. And here's, again, where I'll pause, council, and please ask you and the community to make sure that you have some patience with our new employees. Again, Mr. Ward's been here for 120 days, our new finance director, Mr. Levin Gauske, who's in the gallery, has been here for just a few months, and he's, you know, he's doing everything right now. He's paying the bill, he's taking the money in with Anna, and he's paying, doing the payroll. So, again, we've got more positions to fill, but I think there's a real, a real opportunity to celebrate this, and I'm proud. And as I'll say again to the people who have joined us, I'm very honored that, that you would, you would come and join us. So, again, that one's very, very close to being complete, but again, there's a natural attrition. Again, people, people leave for various reasons, they retire. I think what I've told you in the past, on average, a city our size will lose between six and eight employees a year for various personal reasons. But again, we're working hard with your guidance and your vision on salaries and benefits to, to fill those positions just as quickly as possible. The last note there, of course, is we don't hire people just off the street. We do a very, very thorough vetting using some of our partners in our sibling agencies to help recruit and interview people before we hire them. The next item is, again, another real success, and Mr. Harari, you never think a civil engineer could write a lease, but Mr. Harari did a great job. He did an RFP. He solicited comments from the public with Ms. Wright, and we were real happy. I think we've got a good arrangement with Pacific Rapertory Theater, who's, has a long-term building and land lease for the Outdoor Forest Theater, which is a park, so you can still go there and tromp around on our open space. Again, it seems to be a pretty productive relationship thus far, and I think, what's playing now, Brandon? Mary Poppins. So, if you go there and you see the trust work, the council bought that $60,000 worth of trust work, but we own that now, and it'll be installed permanently. The next item is the pandemic recovery, obviously. I don't know how many of you got the Omicron booster last week with me, but again, we're still dealing with, with impacts of COVID. We're still recovering from it. You know, again, I like, I like being back in person, and I guess the second bullet's really the, the most important one, is we're working with our boards and commissions to transition back to in-person meetings. We will likely always have a hybrid option. So, these meetings will always have a Zoom option. That's why Ms. Romero has two screens. She can, she can take minutes, and she can also work the Zoom. But again, we'll always have a hybrid option for people who don't want to come to the meeting in person for, for safety reasons, totally understandable. Next slide, please. Stormwater ordinance. Again, we're very, very close on this one, but this is not something that we really do alone. There is, we're part of District Nine, the State Regional Water Resources Control Board. They're, they're a tough group. This has to be written under another pesky federal law called the Clean Water Act. And again, so it's really important that we had our attorneys help us draft that for consistency with federal and state law. Again, we are planning on submitting our draft to the regional board, and I think they're in San Luis Obispo down south, that's our district, and of course, the Coastal Commission as well, which will have a keen eye on this. So, again, we're targeting the next couple of months to bring it to the Planning Commission for recommendation to you on adoption. So, that one's very, very close to being done as well. Review barriers to affordable housing. I mean, this is really barriers to housing in general in the village. We did, with your approval, select a housing specialist, and we actually have a kind of a housing specialist on our own team as well, Historic Preservation and Housing. And so, again, we're, we're reviewing a draft of those barriers at this point in time. I am happy to announce that Mayor Potter yesterday appointed an ad hoc committee of councilmembers Felito and Richards to work with Brandon and his team on reviewing those drafts. And again, that will be an ad hoc committee, will not necessarily be a Brown Act committee, but again, the council members are free to invite the public so that we can, again, do a lot of good education and outreach before we finish that work and then move on to updating our housing element, which is due next December, so December of 2023. And just a reminder for the public, Councilmember Felito was our representative to AMBAG, which is our Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, and Mr. Richards is her second on that group. And that is the group, of course, that recently reviewed and approved our RENA numbers, our regional housing needs numbers. And again, there was a very large article in the Monterey County Weekly last week, written by Ms. Marino, and it provides some perspective on those numbers and the challenges that not just Carmel, but the city. I think our number is 349 new residents, and I'm not sure exactly where we're going to put them. But again, this ad hoc committee with the staff and the public will be reviewing those opportunities and options and looking at opportunity sites as well. We're not going to add a second story to City Hall, though. And again, the target presentation to council will probably be November, because you've got a couple of big items on your October agenda that I'll tell you about in a minute. Next slide, please, Ms. Romero. The ADU ordinance, this is the accessory dwelling ordinance. This is, again, something that trickled down from Sacramento, and again, staff and the Planning Commission are working very diligently on this. We expect you to see this in, in December for review and approval, first reading. Mr. Harari is, he keeps telling me every week that he's almost, almost, almost done with the Scout House RFP. He's hiding behind paper over there. The next thing we need, Mr. Pyrex, one of his colleagues, is drafting what we have to do, because it is public property. So, again, we're, we're anticipating the release of that RFP. So, again, people who have expressed interest in a long-term lease in that building can tell us what their vision is, and you can go into, again, a long-term relationship with them, whether it's Scouts of America or any other group that would like to use that building as a facility. The key there is, again, that it remain a public facility and that, just like we have at Sunset and the Forest Theater, that the council can use the space, they can allocate the space to different groups that would like to use it as well. So, again, I'm hoping that when we return to you in just a few months, that will be a much higher number complete, a higher percentage complete. The next one is explore street addresses, and again, this should not be associated with at-home letter delivery. This purely is street addresses, and again, you've all faced the challenges of setting up a brokerage account or ensuring that public safety can get to your house. So, this has been assigned to our brand-new administrative analyst, Emily Garay, and she'll make a presentation to you next month prior to beginning community outreach. We have also reached out to the U.S. Postal Service, to our, the postmaster, the postmistress in the village, and we've not been able to set up a meeting with her, but it's my hope that before your meeting three weeks from today or four weeks from today, that we will have had a meeting, just so we can assure the postal service that is not our intention to begin at-home letter delivery, and we certainly do not want our local post office here in the village closed. It is more than just somewhere you pick up your letters, obviously. It's a social gathering spot. It's somewhere where some people in our, in our community, it's, it may be some of the limited social interaction that they have. So, it's a very, very important institution in our, in our city. So, again, we'll, we'll be working with them, hopefully, and have that meeting prior to our presentation in October. I met with Mr. Yuler. The next one is explore parking management program. This is, again, not to be associated with just paid parking. So, again, you'll receive a presentation through him and Chief Ward in October. So, again, that, that project is going well. I want to thank the council for the individual input that you provided, Mr. Yuler. He'll be presenting that in a condensed format for your consideration, and again, we'll get public comment next month as well. Next slide, please. And the last is the plan for natural areas to reduce fire risk. Monterey Fire, in fact, we just got some stats today. So, Monterey Fire has nearly completed, 97.4% of Carmel properties have been reviewed. That's 3,175 properties have been reviewed by our fire department. There's 53 parcels left. The only problems they found, there were 14 houses that are missing spark arresters in the top of a chimney, so we'll be working with those property owners to get those installed. And then we've got 18 parcels, and mostly they're located in Councilmember Felito's neighborhood on Ridgewood, and it's really because they're adjacent to Mission Trail Nature Preserve, which is an ESHA, an environmental-sensitive habitat area. So, again, we can't go in there, as we would traditionally do, like Pebble Beach has done in the forest, and, and massacrate kind of the, what we call the ladder fuel. So, again, Chief Ward and his role as our public safety director, our fire marshal, Ms. Priwi, Chief Panholzer are working on those last, what did I say, 14 parcels, 18 parcels to get this all done. So, again, the annual defensible space inspection program, it's an annual thing, that's why it's called annual, is nearly complete, and again, we're addressing all those issues. We did budget for fire fuel load reduction again this year. The, the Chief Ward has reviewed a draft RFP for a wildfire risk assessment. This is something you budgeted for several years, and it's always been our fire department's desire to do a comprehensive plan for the cities, all the cities that they represent, Monterey, Pacific Grove, and Carmel. Both other cities have, have budgeted for that, and again, I think the RFP is poised to go out on the street, pending review of Monterey's city attorney and risk, whatever they're called, risk director or something like that. So, that one's really very, very close. And then, again, we have an RFP on the street right now, or, sorry, bid, we're bidding right now, a tree care services that would deal with dead and dying trees and stumps and the big logs that are in the ground and those kinds of things. So, again, hopefully be awarding that, that contract next month. So, those are the big 16. I, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Why don't we move to the next slide? I don't want to talk about these a whole lot, but again, here are the, here are some of the, the other projects, and if you scan and you look at for the percentage complete, some of these might be ripe to move up into the high priority level when we, again, we reconvene on this to talk about it, and we usually do that in a format where the public is welcome, but it's usually off-campus at Sunset Center and Carpenter Hall to talk about them. At the bottom, I think it's important to continue to celebrate that we, we've developed the multi-pronged financial strategy to address our pension liability through development of a Section 115 pension liability trust. We've dealt with the Peninsula Messenger Service for at-home letter delivery for those people who cannot get to the postal service, and then we developed an organics and recycling ordinance. So, I think I'll stop there. Why don't we go back one slide so that nobody focuses on this one, Ms. Romero? Thank you so much. Happy to answer any questions, council.
Thank you, Chip. Excellent presentation. Are there any questions that Chip, by council members, before I take out of the public? Chip, I was just wondering, in the, get back into the update of the zoning code and the design guidelines. Is there going to be an opportunity to talk about front yard setbacks for garages, those kind of things?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And just, just real briefly, Mr. Mayor, you know, when we did design traditions the first time, design traditions won, you know, there was this big discussion that, you know, in the past, garages, and Mr. Rose, Councilmember Rose is in the gallery, he'll remember this, but in the past, garages were not safe places, so they were often detached from houses, and so that became something, you could build a garage within the front yard setback at zero lot line, right? Right? The challenge that we're seeing now, of course, is that, that, that a lot of people are doing that, but they may not be built like on Carpenter Street, which is a high-volume part of a bus and truck route, maybe not the best place for a zero-lot line garage, detached garage. So, again, all those are things that we'll be looking at, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Is there anybody in the public with a question or comment? Okay, come forward. Why don't we take the room first? Yes, do come forward. Good to have you back. You get your name for the record, there's a three-minute limitation on the testimonies, I'm sure you're well aware.
My name is Gerard Rose. Mr. Mayor, council members, Madam Clerk, I just have a few brief remarks to make, but I feel very strongly about it. As I look around the hall today, I see very, very few people, and it bothers me, and I'm sure it bothers you. And I've gone to a couple of coffees with new candidates for Kerry's seat, and I keep hearing people complaining about the masking mandate. Now, I'm not an anti-vaxer. I mean, as a member of the VA, I got my vaccinations early and often, and, and I'm proud that I did. But I'm hearing from people that they think maybe the city has gone too far and for too long without opening up our meetings to everybody and being more welcoming. And that resonates with me. I did some research before I came here tonight to see what the latest law is. I've been practicing for, and I do emphasize practicing, I've been practicing law for 49 years as of this year. And my, my research tells me that the Supreme Court, not surprisingly, has gone back and forth on whether or not the kinds of mandates that cities adopt in order to take on COVID-19 are anything but clear. They, you know, in one ruling last January, the Supreme Court said that some mandates were okay, and then in the same opinion, they said others were not, and it's really hard to put your finger on it. But I think if you look at what Carmel's all about, Carmel is all about being close to our neighbors, that's why we have outreaches to the post office. And I, and since we have Chip Rary here, who's probably the finest public employee I've ever encountered in all, in all my, you know, 30 years here in Carmel, I think if you'd ask him, I think he would probably say that we need to draw an end to this, this mandatory vaxing as soon as possible. And I beg you to look at that. I walked down Ocean Avenue just before I came here, and I didn't see a single person wearing a mask. I think, and I travel often, so it's important, I think, for me to stay healthy, but it seems to me the time has come to pull the plug, and I urge the council to do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Welcome back. Is there anybody else in the building that would like to speak tonight? Do, if you'd like to speak, do come forward now. Come on.
This way, Officer?
It is, you're live.
Okay. My name's Mike Brown, resident of Carmel. And I'm here because I was, we're trying to raise money for the Carmel High School Mock Trial Team.
This is, this is relevant to the top priorities. We're still on this.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry.
Oh, isn't it, sorry?
All right. Okay, we're still on this subject of priorities. Is there anybody wishing to speak to that item? Please come forward.
Mayor Potter and members of the council and county clerk, my name's Maria Bennett, and I'm on, yes?
We need you to speak into the mic.
Yes, Maria Bennett, I'm on Carpenter Street. Thank you very much. I came to speak on another subject, which is an ambulance and a stroke unit for the ambulance, so I don't know when it's appropriate to bring it up, but I didn't hear that the ambulance was one of these items that was going to be purchased or on the list of items to consider. I know that when I came to other meetings, it was mentioned that a new ambulance was planned without any problems or anything for Carmel, so I wanted to know if that's still on the list, if somebody could give me some information on that. And I can address that later, or I can address it now. Maybe I'll just take care of it now, that'll take care of business, I don't have to stand up here twice. I'm representing a group that is in favor of having a new and updated unit to, for the purpose of stroke victims, and since we have an elderly society here, I talked to the firemen this morning, this afternoon. Fire- I talked to the firemen this morning, this afternoon, firemen at Middle Lee, and they have been considering it, and it's pricey, and it's a large unit also. The Burlingame Hospital is the only hospital in our northern area here that has a ambulance solely for the purpose of strokes, we can't afford that. I'm just asking that in the process of purchasing a new ambulance, that they do consider, and the firemen that I spoke to this afternoon at the firehouse, and the chief, they're in favor of that, and I want to be sure, representing other people that are members here in our community, I don't speak alone, I'm just here for them, and my interest. And they don't, and this is not, you know, we know that not all calls are stroke, and of course, stroke would take, if they knew it's a stroke, and if they know it's a stroke, I mean, we're 15 minutes from the hospital, but you have a very limited time limit to get somebody to the hospital, as you can ask the nurse who's in the stroke unit at Chomp, and he's going to come speak to us at the Carmel Foundation again, Brian Merritt, you have a very tight limit, because they have, the tight limit, they have to go into the brain, and they have to remove that blood clot, so et cetera, et cetera, please take that into consideration when purchasing an ambulance. The only other thing, I want a couple of comments on, is personally, I like our addresses the way they are, but I noticed that people do not have the address posted on the outside of the house. Now, like I said, I'm on Carpenter, and there's several numerous homes that do have two things, either a very straightforward, not fancy identification that says, you know, southwest whatever, house number whatever, and that would certainly take the mystery out of it. And there are just lots of houses that don't have an identification. They can be plain, it can be artistic, but I believe it should be posted where it's easily recognizable. So I'm sure there's other things here I can address, but that's, those are my main two concerns.
Thank you, Maria. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's not, that's simple stupid to just put some indication on the house to help the fire department.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak inside the building tonight? Yes, come forward.
Yeah, maybe I don't understand this correctly.
You gotta. No, we're talking about anything that's on the 15 over, I mean, the top priority list. Okay. All right, and is there anybody else, before I go to Zoom?
Yeah, I think we have somebody outside on Zoom.
Okay.
For this, Christine, is, do they want to talk about the priorities, or is this general comment?
No, general comment.
Okay, so not yet.
Okay. All right, I do see some hands up here. All right, we've got Richard Kreitman. Richard, are you prepared to speak tonight? You usually are.
Yes, I am.
You're good.
Well, speaking to the item on the Scout House, I just want to tell you that the Silicon Valley Monterey Bay Council of the Scouts of America, now, boys and girls, is patiently waiting for that RFP, and we are still looking forward to, if the RFP is issued, and we are successful of bringing it back to operation, making it accessible to everyone in the community, and opening it up to all of the community organizations that have historically used it, and looking forward to see the city of Carmel by the Sea having its Christmas party there sometime in the future. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Tasha Witt.
Good evening, Mayor Potter and City Council members. This is Tasha from the resident group Stop Cell Towers in Carmel Neighborhoods, supported by the community. Our group is for cellular service and the least intrusive means to our residential neighborhoods. Our resident group stands together with our city and the directive they have given to our contracted telecom attorneys, which is, quote, "Based on prior feedback from the commission and the public, the stated goal of these ordinances is to regulate the installation of wireless facilities to the greatest extent allowed under federal laws, and to ensure the utmost protection of the unique aesthetic character of Carmel by the Sea." Unfortunately, the city's telecom attorneys did not follow our city's directive in critical ways in their first wireless ordinance draft. We are very concerned that these attorneys are not likely to write the strong ordinance Carmel seeks. Stop Cell Towers in Carmel Neighborhoods hired Andrew Campanelli, one of the nation's top telecom attorneys, because his firm specializes in providing work products that meet the stated goal of this project, and because he does not have a conflict of interest working for telecom companies. In addition, he has been admitted to nine of the 13 Federal Court of Appeals. He has 30 years of telecom attorney experience, fighting for local governments and individuals, not telecom companies. And his ordinance is designed not to stop all wireless facilities, but to give our local government the maximum power to decide where they go. Residents commissioned his work to write a strong ordinance for Carmel by the Sea, and we submitted it to the city last May at no cost to the city. His ordinance meets the goals of both residents and the city. Out of respect to the residents, we would like the city to set up a workshop for our community leaders and the public to hear top telecom expert Andrew Campanelli speak and answer questions about his ordinance, and how he can protect Carmel's character and aesthetics as legally allowed by state and federal laws. Together, let's evaluate the best legal advice and put together the strongest wireless ordinance for Carmel. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tasha. I have a number, 941.
Good afternoon, Mayor Potter and City Council members. This is Kristy Hollenbeck from Stop Cell Towers in Carmel Neighborhoods. We are for cell service in the least intrusive means to our residential neighborhoods. Recently, I reached out to the mayor of Dalton Gardens, Idaho, to see how their wireless ordinance, written by top telecom attorney Andrew Campanelli, was working out for them. I would like to redo his response. Hey, Kristy, thanks for reaching out. Working with Mr. Campanelli was absolutely delightful. He is very professional and really knows his craft. I believe this ordinance is very important for the future of our constituents' health and safety. This ordinance does not stop telecommunications companies from performing their business duties. It does allow for the city to have a say where and how these cell towers are placed. As far as it is working so far, it's still too early to tell if telecom companies will even file for a permit in our city because of the restraints they will have on them. Time will tell for sure. If anyone has questions, please have them reach out, and I will be willing to help in any way I can. Cheers, Mayor Dan Edwards. Idaho and California are both in the Ninth Circuit, so they both are bound by the same Circuit Court decision. This means if Idaho can pass a Campanelli ordinance, we can too. In May of 2022, Carmel by the Sea was gifted a strong defensible best practices ordinance. We asked that the citizen-funded attorney Andrew Campanelli be given time to explain his ordinance to the city council and planning commissioners and answer questions. Why would the city not want to take advantage of free legal counsel from one of the top telecom attorneys in the country? Mr. Campanelli does not have a conflict of interest with telecom. He truly cares about protecting our village and the people in it. I hope we can set up a meeting with him in the very near future. Mr. Campanelli rated the city's current draft ordinance a 1 out of 10 for protection. We are concerned that our city would be less vulnerable. Adopting a Campanelli ordinance as an urgency ordinance would protect our city while we wait for the details to be decided. Mr. Campanelli's ordinance is not designed to stop all wireless facilities, it is designed to give maximum power to decide where they go. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret, I'm thinking that's Margaret, but I'm not sure. Margaret?
It's actually Dale.
That's what I thought, what a surprise.
Dale Byrne, we're outside in the patio with Margaret's computer. So just a couple of things, I'd like to thank the lady earlier about talking about the ambulance. As you know, Carmel Cares was instrumental in working with Robin to obtain a grant from a family foundation, and we're fiscally, fiscal sponsor of that grant, and I have to report back to that family foundation as to the use of the $50,000 in funds, and it would be good to have a report on that, doesn't have to be lengthy, as to how we're doing with either getting the ambulance, or how it's going to be applied to other ambulance services. Related to that, the, I'd like to thank the council once again for approving the street sweeper, and it's going to be transformational in our community when it arrives, and Bob can tell you, but I think it's something like five months, I heard this morning. So that's going to be very exciting, and thank you for approving that. But related to that is the fire engine. The fire department talks to me often when I'm out and about in the gator, and apparently our fire truck is in about the same condition as that street sweeper was, maybe not quite as bad, but they seem to think that we need a new one. It's broken down often, you've seen that green fire engine driving around, which apparently is the airport's fire truck, and I guess there's some other issues with some of the other Monterey fire trucks. So I didn't see that on the list, and I think it would be a good thing to add, or at least investigate fairly seriously, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Is anybody else wishing to testify tonight? I don't see anybody, nobody? Is anybody?
I don't see any hands, right? Oh, there's one outside.
Is there somebody outside that wishes to speak?
On this item, but I think it's, I think it's general comment.
Oh, it's still, okay.
General comment?
No, no, sorry, you've had your three minutes. All right, I'll bring it back to council for direction. Council members, you have preference, any questions, comments?
Yeah, and I can zip through the.
Wait, wait, no.
Real brief answers, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, or if not, I can tell you offline.
No, go ahead.
Me, or?
Jeff.
Thank you. I have a question for Chip.
Yeah.
So in the presentation, you put up a slide with the 14 items that maybe, you know, come December, January, or whenever, the council will maybe supplement the 16, the high priority list with some items. Suppose I wanted to add something to this list of possibilities for the future, or suppose a member of the public wanted to add something to this list for us to discuss whenever we do that, how would we, how would I do that, or how would a member of the public, would a member of the public do that through one of the five of us, or try to find a sponsor, or how would that work? That's a good question. So, you know, I really, I really think about the next time we get together as a group, and again, for everyone's benefits, the department heads are there, members of the public are there, you know, I think it's just individual advocacy, Mr. Barron, so again, it's someone who says, I've noticed X, Y, or Z, I think it should be a high priority, and the council would queue it up. And so, but if someone has something now that they'd like us to consider, we'll certainly add it to the mix for your discussion, but ultimately, you, the five council members will debate the next, the next list of high priorities, and we'll get working on them. So if I come up with some, you know, lame idea about something, and I want everybody to talk about it, it would become item 15 on this list?
Something new to the 24, or something new to the 15? Because there's 24 on the original list.
Something new to the list we'll talk about, to maybe add. Okay. Yeah, just get two more members to agree with you, and, I mean, I think the beauty of where we were in last year at this time, and in March, was, I know the mayor hates when I say general consensus because it's an oxymoron, but there was, there was really unanimous consensus on the part of the five of you to create the 30, and then the 16 high priorities, and I think it was just an excellent exercise of work on the council's part, so I would hope that we would strive for that in the future.
Any other questions or comments? Carrie.
Thank you. So just a few comments on a couple items here. I have to say, I'm a little disappointed that the fire ambulance is not moving along more quickly. You know, Bobby and I, and our subcommittee worked hard on that. I'm hoping that you can push Monterey to bring it back to us in November, since my list of meetings is dwindling here, so I would like to be a part of that. In terms of the pandemic recovery, I concur with Mr. Rose. I think it's time to get rid of the masks. I think it's, we need to also revisit the emergency authority for Chip. I think it's time, we're not in a emergency pandemic, in my viewpoint. Chip's been looking over the numbers in terms of who's been getting sick and hospitalized, so I would like us to take a look at that soon, in terms of resending that ordinance. It's very important that the other boards and commissions start meeting publicly, and if those people want to wear masks, that's fine. And I do appreciate you mentioning that we're going to continue with hybrid meetings, because I think that is an important learning. What we learned from COVID, and it is, people do like to sit at home and listen to our meetings and comment, and that's just one more way of doing that. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, for adding street addresses and parking management to the agenda for October. We've been talking about these things. I think it's important we start engaging the public on them, and I appreciate that it needs to be a parallel process with talking with the post office. We need a better relationship with them, we need to engage them on what our intentions are with street addresses, that it doesn't have to do with getting rid of the post office, or it doesn't have to do with mail delivery, it just has to do with recognizing where our buildings are for lots of reasons. So I'm glad that that's coming. So I appreciate Chip reaching out to the, our post office, and hopefully, they realize how important it is for us to get together.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there anybody else? Karen?
Yes, thank you for this update. I think it was a long time coming, since we had talked about it, and it's really good information to know where we are. I am very disappointed that the wildfire, the plan for the natural areas to reduce fire risk has taken so long, and I am surprised to hear how many inspections have been made. I wonder, are they leaving a message at the door to each of those people, regardless of whether they have corrections, just to say they've been there? I think that would have been a good thing, and maybe should be added to the annual inspection, that we were here, we looked at your property, if you have any questions, just so that people know they have been through your neighborhood to take a look. If we don't know they've been there, we assume they haven't been. So I believe in lots more communication in that respect, and I look forward to them to coming to my neighborhood very, very much. Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess I'd just add my comments. I would support Carrie's comments about the movement of the masks. I think it was time, we go ahead and give that some consideration, so sooner the better on that. And then also, under the parking issues, Bobby and I were at a conference in Long Beach yesterday, or last week, gave you, Chip, some information from a company, said they'd be glad to give a presentation on what contemporary issues are. I mean, I've, I just bought a new car, I don't happen to remember my license plate number. You walk out, you go, put in your number, you had to, hm, what's my number? You had to walk back and forth back, so I actually put in the wrong number the other day and got a ticket. I thought I had it, but I had the wrong number, it was wrong, so. Anyway, there's some, there's some technology out there, it's just a matter of, will it work for this community or not? That's a good question. And then as far as the concern that some of the speakers recommended, mentioned today about their concern about the willing, willingness of our attorney to incorporate a language by other attorneys in regards to the wireless ordinance, I would hope that that is something that comes out of this ad, at a time we put on there for discussion, because I think that, you know, some attorneys can get to a point where they just don't want to pig input, and it's kind of hard to accept the fact that somebody might have a good idea, but went to law school too, so whatever you can do to incorporate, that would be helpful. So those are my concerns. This was a direction, only comments, I think we've had discussion, we've had comments, so we can move on.
Mr. Mayor, so I will, I will respond to the individuals who commented, you know, interpersonally, and I'll update you as well about ambulances and masks and all those kinds of things, so.
Good, good.
Yep, yep.
All right, we have public appearance, there's an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, three-minute limitation on testimony, state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it. Anybody in the room wishing to come forward at this time? You can see, this is new information? Do come forward then, you may speak.
Thank you, City Council members, and Mayor Potter.
Thank you, city council members, and Mayor Potter, I introduced myself already, but Maria Bennett. It seems to me, I recollect the year before, and last year, and over the years, the discussion of an emergency evacuation plan for Carmel. Unless I missed something in the almighty Pine Cone, which I read religiously and appreciate the efforts put into publicizing that, I have not heard anything about that recently. And I think in view of California fires, especially the largest fire in California is in Northern California, and in view of the beautiful trees that we have here, and inspire them being beautiful, I ask that you take into consideration, and maybe it's on the plan, but I haven't heard it mentioned lately, what about that emergency plan as to how we're going to direct traffic? I bring this up because I've been a certified emergency response team member, Seattle, Tacoma, established a budget for Marina, and I'm still with Monterey and our chief there. And I really would like to see an emergency plan finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And Chip, you have information, you're going to get reach to her.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Appreciate the follow-up. So anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, my name's Mike Brown, a resident of Carmel, and I'm here for the Carmel High School mock trial team. This year, well, back in 2016, the Carmel mock trial team, they won local, state, national, went all the way to the international mock trial competition, and won. Now, what has Carmel done as big as that? I can't think of anything. So, but the kids that go all the way back and win, the international. And when I say international, I'm not talking about like in baseball, maybe you have the Toronto Blue Jays, and that's it. The rest are all American teams. These are kids from all over the world that come to this competition. The UK, of course, Australia, New Zealand, but Korea, Japan, they all come to it also. And in 2016, we ran this ad thanking those who sponsored. And Carmel, City of Carmel by the Sea is on here. So we're back again, because again this year, they've managed to, I'm sorry, get a little motion about it.
Good, nothing wrong with a little motion. Thank you, Mike.
Here, here's our.
Your ask.
Anyway, they've managed to do it again. They're going to the international, it's been held in Chicago this year. The fundraising we did last time is a little more difficult this time, and the prices have gone up. The airlines aren't giving out the special rates, restaurants aren't doing anything back there. It's, this is proving to be an expensive adventure. Now, you may ask, well, why doesn't the Carmel Unified School District send them? Well, it's because there are state laws, and there are school district laws that prohibit. And money has to be raised for them to go out of the district to these events. So I'm asking you for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else in the room wishing to speak? Do come forward.
Hi, my name's Tim Vaughn, I live on South Dolores, and I'm here because I read an article in the Pine Cone that there was going to be discussion about eliminating the fires again.
Not yet, sir. We're not to that item yet, sir.
Oh, so I can't discuss that right now?
No, sir.
When can I discuss that?
When we talk about this item, later on the agenda.
Okay.
We'll give you, we'll tell you when.
Okay.
All righty, is there anybody else wishing to speak? I'll open up the Zoom. Is there anybody in the Zoom world wishing to speak under public comments tonight? I don't have any screen, so I don't know.
Yep. Yes. Nancy Toomey here.
I have Nancy Toomey. Nancy, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Just wanted to let the community know that we're hosting a candidates forum next Wednesday, the 21st, at the Women's Club at Ninth and San Carlos, where Sam Far will moderate a panel of our candidates running for the two open slots for city council on various topics relevant to the residents in the area. So we are looking forward to having as much of the community involved, not only business folks, but residents, of course, as the topics will focus around their issues. So please join us next Wednesday, the 21st, at the Women's Club. Doors will open at 6:30, and the program will begin at 7:00. Thanks much.
Thank you, Nancy, appreciate the efforts. Have a hand up from outside at the city council chambers? Is there anybody out there wishing to speak?
Here we go.
Max is trying to speak, but we can't hear you.
There he goes.
Hello? Mayor Potter?
Yeah, there you go. Now you're getting better.
Hi there, this is Lynn Ross.
Lynn, okay.
How are you? My quick topic is, you know, very contemporary, and it is that we must end the beach fires because.
Lynn, this is, it's an agendized item.
Max, would you tell Ms. Ross that this item's later on the agenda?
Sure, sure.
Sorry.
Got it.
Yeah, she has one.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Yes, go ahead. Can we get your name for the record, please?
Future council member Parker Logan.
All right.
I just wanted to go back in time, because I was over the weekend discussing the old Parkland situation, and when I finally got my approval, and the city council met to go over some rules, and I had the contract with a food provider, and I chose a pizza delivery company. And council member Jeff Barron made a rule that would not allow the pizza delivery company to deliver the pizzas to me, and therefore, I had to use my own employees to go out of their way and pay them extra to go and wait in line in a crowded pizzeria, which was kind of unsafe for them. And, and so just, the point is, when Jeff Barron says that he wants to introduce a lame idea, you got to believe him. Thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? All right, I'm going to close the public commentary, bring it back then for announcements. City council, council, city administrator, we'll go to you first.
Yeah, just, just real briefly, thank you for all the feedback we've received on Car Week. We're still looking for feedback. We've got a survey. We didn't want to offend anybody, so if you live in the 93922, which could be the Village, please don't take offense, just click the button that says I live in the 93921. So again, that was an oversight on our part, and we don't want to ignore people who are on the Village that may have a different zip code in the Walker Track along San Antonio, and council member Felito's neighborhood along Ridgewood and parts of Rio. So thank you for that. And then a real celebration, we just heard today that Commander Watkins graduated from the FBI Academy in Quantico. You'll see him back here as soon as Monday, maybe Sunday if we can get him, no, Monday, and it'll be, it'll be great to have him back on the team. It's, it's time to, yeah, so we'll celebrate him when he, when he comes back. I don't know, maybe he has a badge or ribbon or something, I don't know. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. City council members, looking to my left, anybody? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over to see attorney. Steve McEwen, do you have anything to report?
No, there was no reportable action coming out of the closed session. I just want to say it's a pleasure to be filling in for Brian Peerk for your city today, and hopefully, continue to work with you in the future.
Okey-dokey, thank you. All right, now we'll go to council members, looking to my left.
Yes, you know, we council members don't just show up two times a week, I mean, two times a month. We have other duties as well. We're on a lot of different committees and groups. So I'd like to report that as your Ambag representative, last month, we had a very testy Ambag meeting where two different cities appealed their RENA numbers. And they felt they had good reason, but both of those appeals were turned down. And to my knowledge, not one appeal in the state to the RENA numbers has been granted. The Ambag meetings are open to the public, they are by Zoom, but we do take public comment throughout the meeting. So if you have concerns about the RENA numbers, about the transportation plans for Monterey County, that is, and Santa Cruz, and San Benito County, that is the place to get your information. Additionally, I serve on the Coast Walk Committee, which meets a few times a year. Coast Walk is a, it's a nonprofit that is dedicated to providing a walking trail from one border to the other in California, so that you can be either within sight of, smell of, or near the sea. And the coastal trail is not complete all the way through California. The great parts of it are complete. It varies from a little trail to a dedicated paved trail. So what we talked about the other day is, in addition to providing access to the coast, it's very important that the environment and sustainability and care for the coast be part of the mission of Coast Walk. So we're going to work on beefing up the educational component of that. There are also several hikes organized by Coast Walk throughout the state, and you can find that on the Coast Walk website. The third committee that I serve on as your representative is for the Illegal Dumping and Litter Task Force. Now, that's a real exciting one. I have to say that we are so fortunate in Carmel that we do not have the problem that other cities in Monterey County do. In some parts of, the rural parts of Monterey County, it is almost a crisis, the illegal dumping that's going on. And it's a health issue and a safety issue as well. We received a presentation on the cameras put in known spots for dumping. They're quite expensive, but they take pictures of license plates, and they give the authorities a little bit more information when they actually catch someone, because most people say, I didn't do it, I don't know what you're talking about. But what was fascinating to me is they showed several different instances, and people can dump a huge load of trash in literally under a minute. So we're fortunate we don't have this problem, but we do take part in those discussions. And I just thought, as a member of the public, I would have appreciated very much hearing about a little bit more of what my council people served on in other capacities, because we are busy. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Speaking of being busy, for the first time in a few months, the climate, the climate committee is going to be meeting this coming Thursday at 3:30. We have one thing on the agenda, and that's for the committee to, quote, "receive a report regarding a draft consultant proposal for the coastal engineering and adaptation planning study project." So basically, the committee is going to review the specifications for a project that will first inform the city's understanding of the effects that sea level rise is going to have on our coastal resources, including the beach, the dunes, and the seawalls. And then second, attempt to begin the process of determining adaptation member, adaptation measures for those resources. So this is at 3:30 this coming Thursday, and that's my announcement. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Jeff. And Karen, thank you for your service on the litter abatement task force, which I founded about 15 years ago. I really appreciate your involvement and your enthusiasm. It's actually, it was an interesting reason we founded it, because there was so much litter on one between here and Casterville, that we were the gateway to the peninsula, and it was just terrible. So thank you for your efforts. Sue McLeod was part of that task force, too. Bobby Richards?
Yeah, I want to say thanks, Mike, for mentioning that mock trial team. I know several of those kids, and it's pretty fantastic what they're doing and what they're going to do. Also, in that same vein, the Varsity Girls Cross Country was just ranked two in the Central Coast, and the boys were ranked number four, and they'll be running Apollo Corona on the new course Thursday. Another thing I have to, I don't know what else, other venue to say this, but I picked up my city phone the other day, because I don't ever look at it. And I had quite a few voicemails, and different people that have tried to get in touch with me, and I only use my own personal phone. And so I'd like to make that publicly out there. And at the end of this meeting, I will be asking, Mayor, that we talk about city supplied phones for the council, because it could be that, you know, whatever my bill is, I certainly don't need it, I don't need the money put there. Thank you.
I believe Thursday also is the march down from the school down to the park, bottom of the hill, am I right?
Homecoming is, the Homecoming Parade, I'm sorry, is Friday, Mayor, San Castle 59th Annual on Saturday. But yeah, the Homecoming Parade goes down Ocean Avenue, the Carmel by the Sea Rotary, my proud Rotary, Mr. Rose is a new member, will be serving chili. There's a chili cook-off between us and the Carmel Valley and the Carmel Sunrise Rotary, so go down there and taste some chilies, see hi to the kids, and yes, that's Friday afternoon.
That'd be fun, I'll be there. All right, that noted, is there anything else of concern by council members? All right, why don't we move into consent calendar? So 11 items on the consent calendar, is there any member of the council wishing to pull an item? Jeff, you like to pull number four usually?
Yeah, I usually pull number four. And in the same vein, on item number one is the special meeting minutes from August the 2nd. I did pull the item number four equivalent from August the 2nd, and I did vote against the item number four equivalent on August the 2nd. So those minutes are incorrect, as is in the packet. So I've suggested that we bring those back next month.
All right.
Then, I'm only talking about the minutes for August the 1st, and then I have a comment on item number eight.
All right. Well, we consider number four and number one, continue, we'll continue number one by motion, we'll pull up number four for a separate vote, and then eight, you wanted to comment on it?
Yeah.
Go, why don't you comment now?
Yeah, thank you. So I will be voting in favor of this agreement, you know, the council has talked about it in the past, and it's a budget line item and all that. But I know that there's a considerable amount of concern in the Village about the impact of Car Week on the Village. I did tell Rob O'Keefe that I was going to be making this comment today, and I would like to have some clarity as far as what our marketing organizations are doing with respect to sort of minimizing the impact of Car Week on Carmel, and how we can sort of figure that out. So that's my comment on item number eight.
Item number eight for the public was allocation of $210,000, $10 to the Monterey County Convention and Visitor Bureau for Destination Marketing. Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I wanted to comment on that same item. I very much appreciate that a visit Carmel and the Visitors Bureau are attempting to provide a sustainable message, and I would like to emphasize that they continue to do that, because it's very, very important that we balance that the tourists in town with the message that while they're here, we want them to enjoy our town, but to please respect it while they're here, and love it like a local, as they say. So, yes, thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right, so, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to an item that's on the consent calendar? Anybody in the room wishing to speak? Come forward, please.
I didn't understand what you just said, Mayor Potter.
I said that you can comment on the consent calendar now if you'd like.
I don't know that my comment is accurate, but I think it's a comment. It just occurred to me, I'm up and down Ocean Boulevard at least two, three times a day, and I haven't brought it up to the council, because it's, what I'm going to mention, is so incredibly obvious, that I thought the city would take care of it, I thought certainly other members of the community that, I've been in and out of Carmel since I was a little girl, my family goes back to, I dearly love Carmel with Father Sarah and Portillo's sergeants. So I have an interest in Carmel. Now, there is, they were working on, and I know this has to do with federal funding and state funding and all that, but they repaired Highway, Highway 1, their fabulous job working at night. And then I heard that they were going to do some more work on Ocean Boulevard. That is our main entrance to the city, that is, that's where everybody comes up and down Ocean Boulevard, it's where we greet, and we introduce our city to the public coming down Ocean Boulevard. What am I talking about? The holes, the potholes, I'm not talking about the small ones. I want to point out to you, since obviously nobody else has mentioned it to you, is there is one very large, three foot, three, three to four foot pothole that has been repaired three or four times, and it's, after it's repaired, it's completely.
All right, Maria, this is not an agenda item.
Completely.
I'm sorry, you're talking out of order. You're out of order. Please.
It needs to be attended to by public work.
I'm trying to be respectful, ma'am. Please sit down.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Love it. Kevin, Ugarte, Ugarte has his hand up. Kevin, if you wish to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to encourage you to support the city council members, to work with the county, because most, many people, probably most people love the car event, but the traffic situation's gotten out of hand, and perhaps if SEQA was done and enough traffic analysis was done, the permits for the events, which are mostly on county land, could incorporate some traffic mitigation. You know, I'm not against the event, you know, but it, as population of California grows, the people coming to this get more and more abundant, and we need better and better management of the events. And I think that there is no coordinated traffic management in comparison to the AT&amp;T, where people are required to park, take buses, et cetera. There's perhaps ways we could do that and still have a healthy Car Week, but not such crazy traffic. Thank you.
Kevin, I'll consider that as comment on number eight. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else wishing to comment on an item that's on the consent calendar? I don't hear anybody. All right, why don't we bring it back to council? We'll pull number four for a separate vote. Could we motion approve the Resolution 2022-074, City Council of Carmel by the Sea proclaiming a continuing need to meet via a teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section 5493E? Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Second?
Any other discussion? Oh, if there's a favor, say aye.
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 First.
Mr. Barron, that was just on number four.
Oh, I thought that was everything except number four, so sorry.
Just number four, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah. So I have a comment. Sorry, I would like to make a comment on number four. My apologies. Yeah, so I do, it's the same comment I've made the past two or three months. It's time for the city commissions to be meeting in person, and I'll be voting against this ability for us to have remote meetings until that happens. Thank you.
All right, and I would just ask staff before we call a question here on this one. Is it possible to go ahead and remove the mask mandate at this time, if we had notified accordingly?
Mr. Rose asked that question as well. So we use county data based on CDC best practices, and so we are, we are within, I think it's, what does it max? Eight per, eight per thousand or 100,000. And we were at 11 for a long time. Those are test positives, and we are below that now. So I think a week from this Thursday, the masks can come off. Those people who have the Omicron booster no longer have to wear masks in City Hall, and most of us have that as well. So we're very, very close, Mr. Mayor. But again, we have been using best practices based on CDC guidance.
Jeff, do that point.
Yeah, I think, I think there are two issues here. One is the general restrictions around City Hall, which is, I think, I think, Chip, I think you elucidated what those are with, that's sort of under your purview. But I think the council adopted an urgency ordinance that governs the conduct inside this hall. So I don't think you have within your, I don't think you have within your ability to relax the restrictions that we use. I think we've, we've talked about that before. I would be, I would certainly be willing to relax the vaccination restriction. For me, the mask mandate is a little bit more problematic. But I think that those are, I think that in this hall, the restriction is separate, and we would need to address that.
And I think that's what Councilmember Tice asked, so I'm looking at Ms. Gulo, who will run your next meeting, so I'll ask her to work with the mayor, Mayor Potem, to put it on the agenda for October. It's October 4th, I think.
Can I ask a question? Just for clarity, if we all went along and said no, as Jeff is going to do, what would happen?
Then, then we couldn't meet remotely. So what you're voting on is a state code section that allows you to meet remotely, but you would have to meet in person.
Like, like the council does?
Like the council. All the boards and commissions would have to meet. They'd be forced to meet in person.
All right, that noted, we do have a motion to approve, we've given direction to staff regarding future meeting and the mask mandate possible removal. It's a discussion for a later date. Do we have a roll call, please, Nova?
Councilmember Barron?
Okay, so this is item four, just to be clear.
Just number four.
Yeah, we're revoting it since we got it.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
All right, and we have a motion then to approve, continue item number one, which was minutes of August 2022, to correct a slight inaccuracy there regarding just Barron's voting record. We could do that via direction now, vote it now, if you were comfortable with that. Do you want to actually read it?
I personally like having accurate minutes in the minutes, so I'd prefer that we just brought it back next month.
All right, I'll take that as a motion then to continue.
To continue, yes, a motion to continue item number one.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Nova, could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so now then, having had much discussion, then we could hear a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar as presented. That'd be lovely.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, Nova, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, then, in order of business, is we have quite a few employee contracts here for approval or denial. First one is adopt Resolution 2022-8082, authorizing the city minister to execute an MOU between the City of Carmel by the Sea and the Carmel by the Sea. General Employees Unit effective 1-20022424. I think that's through, is that 2004? I'm not sure.
Yeah, three resolutions, Mr. Mayor. One for the general employees, one for the management employees, one for the police officers, and they are Resolutions 2022-082, 083, and 084. And with your permission, I'd like to make the presentations all together. You'll have to vote on these separately. If you have questions, our chief negotiator, Ms. Setarp is, Ms. Katie, I just, I'll never be able to get it right, Katie, I'm so sorry. I try every time, though. She's here to answer questions, but with your permission, I'll just, just do the presentations together.
Bundling them together would be a good idea. The council can, Karen. You're good, thank you.
So, you know, the first thing, I want to thank Katie. I want to thank our negotiating team. Brandon Swanson did a great job, Jane Wilson, and our partners, quite frankly. Our management unit, which is a Launa affiliate, our general employees unit, which is also a Launa affiliate, and our Police Officers Association, they came to the table generally very prepared. They understood the challenges that we were facing coming out of the pandemic, and they were very cooperative. So I want to, want to thank them, first of all. Next slide, please. This is the general unit. Again, the, for the, for the, for the members of the audience, we really took a big-picture approach, and then we worked methodically in a interest-based type approach. So again, and this was the mayor's idea. This was very successful when he was with the county, is, is coming to, coming to terms with, with our similarities, and like, like having a safe budget and having a secure budget, you know, interests that we both, both parties agreed on. So we used this, this type of a negotiating format for all, for all of our bargaining units this time. And then we kind of drilled down into the specifics. So you'll see that bullet, you'll see this slide on all three of the different bargaining units. So next slide, please. And again, here, here's what I just said, long-term sustainability, fiscal stability for the, for the city, prudent fiscal management, maintaining service levels and levels of, service levels of quality, stability in labor relations, and then you'll see this as well, shared interest consistently being employee retention and recruitment. Next slide, please. So again, here are the, this is a two-year contract for our general employees, retroactive to July 1st of this year. It's a first year, 7% increase, base salary increase, and the second year, 4%. And then a litany of other elements, a sixth step, a deferred compensation match, and some other items. Again, one of the few things that councils in California can do in closed session is negotiations, for obvious reasons. So the council worked very closely with the negotiating team and with the bargaining units to, to bring forward the item that you have before you. So, there's no questions on this slide. I think I'll go to the next one, please. So I'm getting choked up on these, it's just a, so the next unit is the management unit. Again, next slide, please. Again, next slide, please. The same, the same interests that we worked on. The, the process was a little bit more laborious, it was a little bit more time-consuming, but again, we got to sit down with the groups and really spend a lot of time understanding their interests and making sure we had the time to share the council's interests. Next slide, please.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry for interruption. Could you just tell us, management unit is maybe sort of, could you tell us which employees are in the management unit and which employees are not in the management unit? So like your direct reports versus the line of what is-
Yeah, that's a good, thank you, thank you, thank you, if I may, council. So I were, I serve, and the city attorney serve at the pleasure of the city council. I report directly to you. My department heads work under contracts with, with us, with me, with the city. So Mr. Harari, and Mr. Swanson, Mr. Lewandowski, Ms. Gulo, Chief Ward, obviously. Those are our positions that are not represented. They are not organized as a bargaining unit or certainly a union. So those, all those individuals have individual contracts negotiated directly with me on your behalf. And then we have a group of management employees, and these are the senior planner, the street superintendent, facilities superintendent, city forester, I think down to the associate planner. So there's, you know, six or seven, again, we don't represent, we represent the people, but through the position. So those are the management employees. Again, and they are affiliated with Launa, which is a laborers' union. And then we have our, our general unit, and those would be our administrative professionals, the people who work on our crews in the field, the assistant planner, the code compliance coordinators, all the, the general employees who are non-sworn, i.e., they're, they're not in public safety. And they also are organized as a bargaining unit and represented by, they're an affiliate of Launa. So again, they're affiliated with, with the group. They're not Launa, they're affiliated with, with the bargaining unit. And then our police officers are sworn officers, as well as non-sworn officers. They negotiate together, and they're represented as a bargaining unit by an attorney. And then the last group, which you previously approved, are paramedic firefighters, which again are a six-person unit, represented by an outside attorney and unionized as well. How's that?
Great.
All right, great. So again, the, the, this is for the, the management unit, again, the same base salary increase, it's a two-year contract, seven and four for the two years, and then again, things like matching people's deferred compensation, some insurance benefits, an additional general leave day, additional time for an employee to get to a medical appointment. And again, these were all things that, that the, the employees thought were important for their well-being, and the council agreed. So if there's no questions on that one, I think we can go to the, the police officers, and then this is kind of the, you know, next slide, please. Now, again, the, the challenge that we had here was, again, employee retention and recruitment. I mean, that was the biggest, the biggest challenge, was again, attracting, attracting police officers. And what we came up with, if you can go to the next slide, please, is a, is a pilot program. It's a three-year pilot program that would effectively strip away all the additional pays, pay categories that the police officers, the sworn, I'm sorry, let's go with the non-sworn. The non-sworn, it's a three-year contract, 533, so 5% retroactive July 1st, 3% next July 1st, and then 3% in 2024, and then a deferred compensation match. So again, the, 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 the non-sworn employees will receive a different, different rates than the sworn employees, which we'll go to now, please, Ms. Romero. The, the pilot program, which, which was developed through work in, in our, in our negotiations, reduced the budgeted sworn positions to a total of 13. And, and with that, the rank structure, as you can see in the second sentence, will be one chief, Chief Ward, one commander, two sergeants, eight officers, and one officer assigned as the detective. And again, Chief Ward can wax poetic about the challenges of having a police officer also work, detective work, which is challenging, because they're on and then they're off, so they don't get to concentrate. So the model that we have here is a detective that will be focusing on those unsolved cases. And so this, this, I think, will be very, very fruitful. And what you'll see also in this scenario is we've stripped away the corporal position. So again, what we're going to do is, we're going to come back in two years, and we're going to see if this model is working. This is a model that the command staff, and the city council, and the officers, the POA believe will provide optimal safety for the village. I think that, that in the agenda report, you'll also see that this will require some additional funding at mid-year, in January, and some additional funding the following year. Because again, for us to remain competitive in a profession that has been, dare I say it's somewhat maligned in our society in the last several years, we were having difficulty attracting and retaining officers. The other element of this, of this agreement would provide a deferred compensation of $10,000 in the first year, and $15,000 in the second year, and $20,000 in the third year, that would be spread over the course of the year into a sworn officer's deferred compensation investment structure, into their, into their portfolio. You know, just the other day, I was reading, I think it was the Pine Cone, and there was an ad for Scotts Valley, where again, there was a signing bonus for sergeants of $30,000, and for, for brand-new officers of $20,000. So again, the competition that we were facing to attract new, new officers was, was, was pretty vigorous. Monterey, as we talked about in closed-session council, offers, I believe, a signing bonus. So again, this is a relatively unorthodox approach, but again, as I've said, this is something that we have deemed a pilot program. And Chief Ward came in, you know, right, you know, unfortunately, at the end of it, but I've spoken with him, and this is a, a program that we're going to do our noble best to, to, to work. And, but again, we'll come back to you with a scenario of whether it's working in two years, whether, and the length of the contract, again, is three years. So I feel like I'm kind of all over the place on this one. Next, next slide, please. The other element of this is a standby, a standby shift. So again, this is when we'll have two officers, obviously, on duty at all times, but if there's a need to bring back someone, they will be required to respond. And for that requirement to respond, obviously, they won't be imbibing in alcohol, and they will be local, so they'll be a report time chief of, you know, 30 minutes or 40 minutes, whatever it is, to get into a city, into the village, so that we, we can use their help. So the other element, of course, that you'll see there that we negotiated is reducing the number of steps in the series from six to three, and, and again, increasing the base pay for those employees to be more competitive. Next slide, please. And again, here you see the new, the new salaries for police officers, going from about $129,000 to $150,000. And then, of course, that's for a, a member with fewer than 12 months, and then it's structured beyond that with continual years of service. Next slide, please. That's it. So I can answer any questions on any of those. Katie can certainly answer questions. Brandon's here, Max is here, and the chief is here, if there are specific questions that I cannot answer, council.
Council members, any questions at this time?
Yes, I have a question.
All right, Karen?
I think in part of our discussions, technology, increase in technology was- I think in part of our discussions, technology, increase in technology was mentioned. Will we be getting information of that?
Chief, can you speak to that at this point in time? Would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy to talk to you about technology. So I've had a lot of conversation internally. We can do a lot in upgrading our technology, and that's going to be one of my highest priorities, is looking at the systems we have and looking for ways to leverage because we are going down officers. And so that's a mild concern for me in the sense that we really want to increase coverage and leverage the volunteers and the business community and the residents to engage in camera systems. We also have scheduling software I'm looking at. We're looking at dispatch innovations, records management, timekeeping, and other things like that, and scheduling software that will help us be more efficient and responsive in calling in officers and dispatching them and all those kinds of things. I think that's a big priority for me.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? All right, open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the public wishing to comment on any of these three items? Is there anybody in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom world? I don't see anybody. We'll bring back the council for direction, council members. Oh, I'm sorry. Katie, did you want to say something?
Sorry, no, I should just see my glasses. You did a great job covering everything, I think.
Well, I would comment that this has been a very, very collaborative process, which is not normally the way labor negotiations go. It's almost always about the money. And this time, we were able to sit down and figure out if the common interest that we would have that we could come to agreement on first. That made a big difference, and it's a very refreshing approach to find out that there's things other than monetary compensation to make an employee comfortable working here. He was very, very creative, very well done. Katie, you did a great job. Much appreciated. Bobby.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that. I've gone through this a couple times now, and this was a very smooth process. And I think that, Katie, your help was immeasurable. So thank you very much. And Mayor, thanks for the great idea.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
We can move these collectively as one item. I think we can adopt Resolution 2020-28-082, adopt Resolution 2022-083, and 2020-22-084 resolutions. If we would have a motion of that effect, I think we can move them.
We should just... Mr. McEwen, are you okay with us, that approach, sir?
Yes, that's fine.
Did you make the motion, Dave? And I'll second it.
I'll make the motion to adopt. The three resolutions. Do you want me to read them again?
No, you read it. I seconded it.
Oh, sorry. I didn't hear you say it. Okay, we motion move a second. No, could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
All three resolutions approved unanimously.
Thank you. A lot of work done. All right. Well, the next item is approval of appointments to the Historic Review Board and the Forest and Beach Commission. Bobby Richards and I, Vice Mayor, and I sat down and interviewed seven candidates a while ago, and we came up with recommendations of Esther Goodhue, Michie, where is her name again? Esther Goodhue, Bart Tamara, Michie, and Kelly Lewis Berzaski, Berzaski. These people were very, very qualified. It's every... I'd say it's one of the most difficult tasks that I have as a mayor. I think, Bobby, you'll agree, finding the right fit for these commissions. We've had some wonderful people that applied. We had seven people come forward this time. When we first did, I remember one time we had 22 people to select from. This was a tough choice, really. But I do think that the three we've recommended are excellent candidates, and I think they'll do a good job. So Bobby, do you have any comments?
No, I would concur. It's a very difficult task when you're putting volunteers, basically you're choosing volunteers for this job. And they were all very qualified, and I appreciate them coming out. So thank you all very much for doing that.
And to those who didn't get appointed, I wish that you can reconsider. We do have another opportunity for other commission vacancies coming up. So we will go ahead and have some more additional considerations and additional discussions. So anybody in the public wishing to comment on this item? I don't see anybody. Council members?
Yes.
Jeff?
I would, you know, just like to take this opportunity really to thank Catherine Galtieri for her almost two decades of service on the Historical Resources Board. I don't even know what to say for that level of dedication. And also to Eric Dyer for the knowledge that he's brought to the board and all the leadership he's provided over the course of the past, I don't know, decade, however long he's been doing it as well. So those two especially, thank you so much for all of your service.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate those comments. Is there anybody else?
Yes, I too would like to thank them for their service. Having served on the Forest and Beach Commission for a total of 16 years over, a few times I know the commitment that these people make. So it's Catherine and Eric. Thank you very much. I would like to maybe consider the idea that in the future, we might have to expand our sphere of influence a little bit in order to have a little broader amount of applicants. And maybe that's something you could think about.
It's sort of clairvoyant of you, actually. We, since there's a requirement that we have somebody from the Architectural Committee, we've lost Thomas Hood and we lost Eric Dyer. I think if he would be brought back for consideration and modification, that if he worked within the community, then you still had a presence there that might qualify. If we would modify the qualifications, perhaps we could retain instead of lose some of the people that we have recently. That'll be a consideration. We'll put it on the calendar for next month. Thank you, Karen. Much appreciated. All righty. So we have a motion. Would we get a second? Yeah, we do. Did we get a second? Dave Mc... I don't think I made a...
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll move the approval of the adoption of the appointment. Motion a second. No, could we get a roll call, please?
Roll call, okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferlito?
Yes.
Councilmember Tice?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Potter?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I think we'll take a 10-minute bio break now before we go to the next item, which might take a little while. We'll come back at, let's say, 6:30. Does that sound good? 6:30 it is. I'm sorry, am I driving over you? Yeah, I think I might just put this in circular file. What do you think? I don't know.
Called back to order the Council meeting for the fifteenth, fourteenth of September 2022. We're going to receive a report and provide direction of staff on Carmel Beach City Fire Management Pilot Program. Brandon, do you want to kick this off?
Unless Chip wants to do a brief introduction, otherwise I'll plan on just jumping right in.
Just, I mean, this is, you know, we're, there's no decision tonight. We're looking for your direction and depending on your direction, we'll bring back a resolution at the very least that creates a series of recitals to defend that position. Whether it's defending it with the community or defending it with the Coastal Commission, we'll do a better job. Councilmember Felido's got a great prop, which is five inches of paper on the history, part of the history of beach fires in the community. Brandon's got one. I have one in my office as well. It's just too heavy to bring in. But again, we'll, we'll, we'll build, we'll build findings for your decision, no matter what it is. And again, we're just looking for some direction tonight.
Wonderful.
And I will have one more, one more comment about, yeah, that's all I have right now.
Yeah, I couldn't have done a better introduction myself. So what are we here for? We're here to give you some program background, talk about the data that we collected over the 2022 season, and we'll talk about why really it's just the 2022 season, and then receive that all-important direction that Chip was talking about. You've got three questions in front of you tonight, which I'll expand later in the presentation so you understand what the ramifications of each of those are. But in short, the three options for you tonight we're asking for direction could be, one, should the pilot program be extended or permanently ended after September 15th? And if it's extended, meaning that we keep another pilot program for another year, should the rules remain the same? Should we change them? And if the pilot program is ended, then what course of action are we going to take? Does that mean we're going to allow them forever in the future, or we're going to prohibit them forever in the future? And we'll get into that towards the end of the presentation, but keep that in mind, if you would please, as we go through. That's ultimately what I'll be asking you at the end of this presentation. So just some background, June 30, 2016 is when we started this adventure, long before I was here, obviously, but still part of this saga now. There's been various iterations of the program between 2016 and 2019, allowing various numbers of devices. At one point, there was a prohibition of wood being burned, and we tried to go only to propane. That was actually appealed to the Coastal Commission. And before the appeal was heard, we rescinded that decision and adopted a new coastal development permit in 2019, at the end of the season that year, to create basically what we know the program rules are today, which limits to five total wood burning devices. Those are the quote-unquote "smokeless pits" that we see down there that Public Works installs at the beginning of the season and removes at the end, allowed between 10th Avenue and Martin Way only, and running from May 15th to September 15th only. So that end of the season, September 2019, was when we had the start of the program as we know it today. So 2020 was set to be the first year of the program rules. And for those that have been living under a rock and don't remember, that was also the first year of the pandemic. So in March of 2020, that proclamation of local emergency was adopted by this council, which then facilitated the closure of the beach effectively, no, no fires on the beach. So 2020 pilot program did not happen. So then for 2021, we did have the program happen. However, if you recall, 2021, we were still in the throes of COVID and the pandemic, which brought us travel restrictions both globally and nationally. So this did reduce the amount of travelers we saw to the village and ultimately to the beach. So I think it was unfair to say that was a full year of the pilot program. And then in 2022, the pilot program, of course, continued. That's the year we're in right now. All of the travel restrictions were gone. Arguably, the number of visitors to the village and the beach returned to the pre-pandemic levels. So it was really our first full season of that pilot program. Under those new rules, they were adopted with CDP 19-194. So from this last season, 2022, we've gathered some information for you to consider. I'm going to run through some of these. You can read, obviously. We had, at the time that this was put together, we only had 13 weeks of data, so we estimated what we, what we would be at after 18 full weeks, which is the, the season duration. So about 187 for the full 18-week season. That's the number of total device cleanings. This means Public Works going down there, cleaning stuff out, cleaning stuff up around it. Those are individual trips down there to clean individual devices. The total cost of that is estimated to be about $7,200 for the 18-week season. It's about two employees at 10 hours per week. The cost to put them in the beginning of the season, take them off at the end of the season, about $2,500. And we have some statistics here because the Public Works team does such a good job keeping records when they go down there. You can see how often the devices were full of sand, which is not what we ask people to do. It's actually on the beach rules. Please don't put sand in there to put your fire out. But even with those rules being clearly stated, 51 times out of those 187, I'm sorry, of those 135, or 71 out of the 187, either way, it's about 38% of the time people were putting sand in those beach fire devices, which speaks to a little bit the effort that goes in. So we've got the numbers, the costs and the hours, but the things that our teams are doing when they go down there is things like getting the sand out, getting the garbage out, picking all this stuff. So it's not just hours. It's the actual work itself that's taking place. You can see the number of times burnt wood and trash was found outside the devices for the full 18-week season, estimating about 41 times. Dog waste bags, those are a big problem. Estimated seven for the full season. And just some, call them fun facts, if you like, but examples of things we found in the devices, shoes, textbooks, cell phones, CO2 cartridges, bottles and cans, construction lumber, and the list goes on. We also received data from our partners at the police department. We had 35 logged contacts over that 13-week period, which then we extrapolated and estimated to turn into about 48 contacts for the full 18-week season. So this means a call to our police department where they need to go down and actually visit the beach. That time and cost extrapolated out to about $2,400 for the full 18-week season. There were two formal citations issued to date at the time this report was put together, but we estimated that that would extrapolate out to 18 weeks. And then lastly, we did contract for private beach security. If you recall, when this contract was initially put together, I believe it was a $10,000 contract, but there was some extra time put in there for extra employees, and that brought us up to the $11,100 for the full 18-week season that you see there. So what are the next steps? The pilot program itself, even though the season ends on the 15th of September, the pilot program itself expires on November 30th, 2022, so in about two months. So what happens when that happens? Well, we revert to what's in our zoning code right now, chapter 1720-200. It doesn't limit the time of the season, doesn't say only between May and September. It's 365 days a year. It does say you can't have fires past 10:00 PM, but they can start at 7:00 AM in the morning. It talks about building fires in the sand. It doesn't limit it to only city-approved devices. It does say you can put them in like a hibachi charcoal grill or a light receptacle, but that's about the biggest limitation you have in there. It almost encourages them to go in the sand. So if we do absolutely nothing come November 30th, 2022, those are the rules that we're going to have in the city. So depending on what the council gives us for direction tonight, we will, I'll get to the next slide, but we're going to need to do something, either revise coastal development permit or an urgency ordinance prior to that expiration, which we can then bring back to you in October or November based on that direction we get tonight. So here's the little more expanded version of the questions we're asking you tonight. First question, should the pilot program be extended or permanently ended after September 15th? So we need that answer first. Do we want to keep going with the pilot program? Or do we want to say we've learned enough with the pilot program and we're done? Once we've answered that question, if your answer is extend the pilot program, then we just need to know if you want the rules to be exactly the same, or if you want to tweak some of the rules. Either way, we'll need to amend that coastal development permit, the 19-194. To extend it, to add more rules, either way, we have to amend a coastal development permit. We probably will not need to adopt an urgency ordinance if that's the case, because I think we can get that coastal development permit back to you in the next month or two before the program expires at the end of November. So then the second answer could be, if the pilot program is ended, meaning we're either going to allow them permanently or prohibit them permanently, then we're going to have a little bit more work to do. So if we're going to allow them permanently, we'll need to amend both the zoning code and the local coastal program and adopt a new coastal development permit. It's important to note that the zoning code and LCP amendment means that we also have to go to the Coastal Commission. It's an extra step in there. If we're going to prohibit them permanently, we will just need to amend our zoning code and our local coastal program. We obviously won't need to process a new coastal development permit because we're not permitting anything. So if we're doing, allowing them forever, we'll do three things, zoning code, local coastal program, and coastal development permit. If we're prohibiting, zoning code and local coastal program amendment. Both of those have to go to the Coastal Commission. No. It's important to note, though, that because of the time to process a zoning code and an LCP amendment, if we take those options, we most likely will need to adopt some sort of urgency ordinance or amend the coastal development permit in October or November so we don't end up in that situation that I described earlier, where we revert back to the zoning code for the city, unless, of course, that's what the city council wants to do. So that's another option for you, is just to let it revert back to the zoning code that we have right now. So I hope that that was clear. There was a lot of code talk in there, but available for any sort of questions.
Would you go?
Definitely have a question. So allow, you mean allow the devices or allow fires?
Allow fires.
So to allow, to, okay, so to allow fires, if the pilot ends, we have to adopt a whole new CDP?
That's correct.
Why, if we prohibit, do we not have to?
You don't have, because we would not have to put forward a permit for development because a coastal development permit is a permit that allows some sort of development. And so fire pits or having fires, a program for fires on the beach, is considered development by the Coastal Commission. To prohibit something, we'd need to amend our zoning code and our local coastal program to put those regulations in there that says this is prohibited. We wouldn't be permitting anything, so we wouldn't need to process a coastal development permit.
So we could do away with fires without going to the Coastal Commission?
No. Both the zoning code amendment and the LCP amendment have to go to the Coastal Commission.
Okay, but we wouldn't have to adopt a new CDP?
Correct. CDP would be just like a permit. Let's just call it a permit. So you wouldn't have to approve a permit.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? They're bringing in by council members. I don't see anybody. All right. Opening up for public comment. Is there anybody in the room wishing to comment on this item tonight? Three-minute limitation on testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it. Don't hesitate to come forward. Last call.
Hi, thanks for this opportunity and for covering this important topic. I just think that whatever we do, that everybody has a chance to go to the beach. And the only way that you can accomplish that is by preventing wood fires. So many people are prevented access. This is a legal access issue. And I think that we should look at it like that. It's just not going to the beach. It's illegal access. And even, I dare say, what if this were all black people who we were preventing access to? And I really think we have to consider how long we can go on preventing access to people. Thanks so much.
You get your name for the record?
Lynn Ross.
I know it's Lynn, but I didn't think of it. Maybe she likes to identify herself. Your next speaker. Let's not hesitate.
Mayor Potter, members of the council, and city staff. My name is Cindy Lloyd. Thank you for your patience and forbearance as you grapple yet again with the issue of wood fires on Carmel Beach. Carmel owns several city parks. Carmel Beach is one of them. Ownership implies stewardship that is defined as the careful and responsible management of something entrusted to one's care. From the charcoal-embedded gray sand of a few years ago, our unique soft white sand has returned, for the most part, thanks to the collaborative efforts of concerned citizens, responsive council members, and dedicated city staff. However, the five fire pits in use this past year, as set forth in the Beach Fire Management Pilot Program, have not eliminated charcoal. New signage, additional monitoring, daily maintenance, and attentive volunteer cleanups have been unable to eliminate the misuse of the fire pits. Carmel's founding was based upon a love of and respect for nature. Trees, white beach sand, aquamarine ocean water, clear blue sky, and drippy gray fog. All of it lured people to settle and live here. There was no longstanding tradition of beach fires, but as the population increased and Carmel Beach became the go-to place for fires, the inevitable happened. Beach fires got out of control. The Fourth of July became akin to a war zone. What once was an occasional beach fire for family enjoyment became a conflagration. Carmel River Beach, under the stewardship of California State Parks, dealt with their problem of charcoal-blackened sand by eliminating beach fires, period, full stop. Carmel Beach, under your stewardship, deserves the same responsible management of our unique white sand that has been entrusted to your care. Abolishing wood fires will eliminate future damage to our white sand and ensure all people will enjoy the beach free of potential health risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Next speaker.
Hi, Denise Hodderston. Thank you for dealing with this. I've been here for, I don't know how many years with this issue, but I just want to make, I know we've said everything, probably. Thank you. You're a gentleman and a hero. Anyway. And as they say in the South, damn few of you left. Anyway. What I want to talk about is just as a personal plea to every individual here, to think about Carmel's identity. I worked at the Convention and Visitors Bureau in San Francisco for five years, and we created an identity. And what I want you to think about is, who are we? Who, who do we want to present our faith to the world to look like? And it's a simple thing. We are in the Garden of Eden, and we want to preserve it. It's very simple. And the other thought is, there was a historian here, I don't know his name, and he wrote this wonderful letter about the past and how we can't, we can, we need to change. And I just want everybody to imagine that we're in It's a Wonderful Life, and you are George. And you're going to meet Clarence. It's an angel. He's an angel. And he's gonna come back and he's gonna help you see your life if you don't make the brave, courageous decision as a human. And we all, well, you know, ironically, it's called Pottersville, but it's not a very pleasant place to be. But that is a certain, there's a certain irony. There's, there's too many saloons and all the fallen women. It's a very, it's a wonderful story and it's Americana story. And, um, if, I just want the children, I want you to think how you would feel if it was your child and they got any number of diseases made worse by your decision today. It's a far-reaching decision their whole life, their whole life. One child could have an asthma attack and die, but many children will have cancer from. So just think about who we are and who you are. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello all, good to see you again. Year after year, I come and address you. Nancy Chira Garcia. Worked 25 years in healthcare. I don't think this is about access for people that have asthma or smoke issues. We have fireplaces in the city. We've gone around and around and around. Your neighbor's fire is closer than a beach fire. It's time to make the final decision to preserve fires on the beach. We've compromised again and again, five pits. I mean, we started this pilot program with the concept of 16, compromised again down to 12. Come on, folks. It's access for all. It's not elitism, only people with multimillion-dollar houses on scenic for a private beach in front of them. Everyone, surfers, visitors, tourists, residents, let's protect that asset, asset, which is this gorgeous beach, this amazing, beautiful village. We all agree it's an amazing, nature-filled place, and that's part of the reason we're all here. Living smaller cottages, this, that, that, right? We all want to protect it. Let's spend our money wisely, city council, mayor. Let's do better job on educating. Every tourist town you go to, Paris, you know, anywhere we visit, trash on the street, trash in a fire pit, et cetera, et cetera. It's our job to educate. Our hotels, visit Carmel, everybody treat it like a local, buh buh buh. We've got to keep on, a sign is not enough. A security guy that just walks by, I'm not trying to disrespect anyone, but if, if the mode is it's nine o'clock, wrap up your fire, that isn't what we need. What we need is this is how we use it throughout the hours of operation. I think more pits. I think you don't just concentrate on the south, you know, side of it, yet extend on the beach, less density, smaller crowds, smaller smokeless fire pits. If they're spread out and have a few more, we've discussed this. Please, time to just end this endless, it feels like it's been 14 years, frankly. You know, I looked up some things. It actually has been 14 years. We just didn't have the pilot program. So time to make the decision. You're all wise. You all know the issues and the perspectives. We've all done this dance for a long time. Let's have the pilot program stay. Let's extend for more pits so that there's less scenic residents only on the south side getting more of the impacts. And let's properly educate. I'm getting a red light. So let's educate, not just signs, and let's manage the money wisely to preserve that asset and have true access for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to speak tonight? Okay, I'm gonna go outside. Is there anybody outside wishing to speak, outside the chambers? Okay, well, we'll go to the John Cromwell.
Yes. Can we participate in my video?
Yep.
Yeah, great, thank you. Uh, yep. Mayor Potter, members of the city council, I appreciate you taking the time to revisit this. I would like to suggest that we consider seriously banning wood fires permanently on the beach. Now, I've been fortunate to be able to enjoy the beach for over 50 of my years, and I was astounded how filthy it was becoming prior to our adoption of these pilot programs. And I still have a photo log I can share with you if you're interested of all the charcoal debris, the, you know, what had become of our coves and our beautiful white beach. And the physical appearance was really disturbing, but the big concern is how much permitting these fires restricts the ability of people that might have compromised respiratory issues from being able to enjoy the beach, particularly in the evenings when you might want to go watch a sunset. And that's something that, I have a family member that does something like that, and it's something that is concerning when I find that we have a beach that we can't access when we want to because the fires are, we're frankly out of control. Now, granted, over the past six years, it's been a blessing. I'm very pleased with what's become of our beach. And what's interesting, if you consider that this might have been economic concern in terms of being able to encourage the most number of people enjoying our beaches, well, the past couple of years have proven what a remarkable resource the beach is for making it available to anybody. And the fires weren't the draw. It's our natural resource. It's a beach, it's so beautiful. So I'd like to continue that. By the way, I do not live on scenic and I find it disturbing that some people suggest these are only people on scenic that are bothered by the smoke. I live several blocks away from the beach and on summer nights, when the smoke is so intense and you find you have to close up your house just to keep the smoke out of it, it's just, it doesn't make any sense at all. So let's try to move forward, not move backwards. Let's restrict wood fires permanently. I think that's the right thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the testimony. 2016 iPad, it says. Kathleen, are you there? Hmm.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Sorry, this is Kathy Bang. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, Mayor Potter, council members. By my reckoning, we've reached 13 year, year 13 and meeting 47 on this topic. My husband and Gary and I have a simple message. If we have learned anything over the past two to three years, it is that people's health is precious and fragile and our environment is precious and fragile. Wood fires harm people's health and the environment. The city should not be enabling this harm. The era of wood fires on the beach should end now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Toomey?
Yes, um, hello. Thank you all for what you do. I did send advanced communication into the council and to Brandon as well, saying that I wholeheartedly support continuing the five, uh, fire, wood fire pits in the program indefinitely. As a part of my position, I called out additional detail that I don't have to go through here. But should a Plan B be critical in your decision-making, I would call out that the Carmel River State Beach, and you can go up to their website and find this information, they have allowed propane fires only. That is in their model, uh, in, in place today. So my recommendation on a Plan B, other than continuing the current five wood fire pits with more oversight and policing in whatever form that needs to take, would be to shift to propane only. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Kevin Urquhart, and then Richard Kreitman. Kevin? Kevin? Sorry, I've mispronounced your name earlier, Kevin.
No problem. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfectly.
I am, uh, gonna make my position in support of the continuation of the pilot program. And in addition to the continuation, you should reinstitute the air quality evaluations that you did before. What I want to say to all the people who are, you know, crying major tears over all this, as if it's destroying the environment, is follow the science. Very seriously, follow the science. The people that are telling you that beach fires are destroying their health have no scientific basis for those statements, none whatsoever. As your existing studies in the public records show, a far higher number of beach fires than are currently allowed would not violate air quality standards. In addition, the city council has done the right thing by requiring new types of fire pits that are far cleaner than the ones upon which the air quality research was done. So therefore, you did monitoring before with fires that were open fires, not like the ones in the current high-flow, high-heat, low particulate emission fireplaces. And you found that 20-plus of those, not the current ones, which are much cleaner, would not violate air quality standards. And air quality standards were based on biological research studies of human physiology. I was actually a participant back in the seventies. And that showed that the air quality standards for ozone in LA were not good enough because they overwhelmed the asthmatic drugs. And newer air quality standards were imposed that were stricter. So our newest standards do protect people with asthmatic diseases, et cetera. That's how they were developed, with the test subjects like myself. So when people tell you they can't stand the current levels of smoke, they may have that opinion as a personal belief, but it is scientifically unsustainable. All the facts show that you have, are way below the air quality cutoffs and a doubling or tripling of the new technologically efficient fireplace pits would cause no problems. So I have to ask you, don't listen to the NIMBYs. Figure out a way to go forward balancing air quality, balancing health in a reasonable manner, which you've done so far. As a matter of fact, even excessively, going way beyond what's necessarily required by science. And I hope that that sensibility will proceed forward to represent the majority of us, not just the vocal minority that do not want beach fires. And lastly, I would remind people who think that current air quality is normal, they're wrong. If you bother to go into the scientific research and literature, and I'm a master degree scientist, certified in multiple areas and with a minor in land use environmental planning, you will find that air quality in California, prior to the advent of Western immigrants, was way different than it was now.
Sir, you're out of time. If you could summarize, I appreciate it.
The paleo-climatologists say that we would have 40% smoke every other year. We're way better off than that now and beach fires aren't causing a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard Kreitman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So some decades ago, we realized that asbestos was, was toxic, was deadly. And, and just as we now know, that wood smoke and the trash smoke that comes out of these fire pits, and they are not the efficient smokeless apparatus that the previous speakers claimed. You walk along scenic when the five pits are burning and there are smoke plumes and you walk through them. But with, with this concept, they're saying about the asbestos, for me, it's sort of analogous to saying, oh, let's take the asbestos out of the classrooms at River School, but let's take it out of five out of six classrooms because that should be enough and leave it in one because that's what we're doing by leaving these fire pits. It's, it's as if we're only gonna poison some of the people some of the time. So I agree, we should eliminate wood fires completely from the beach. I am, well, you know, I have propane fire rings that I've built. I think propane provides a, a nice beach fire that people can warm to and sit around the fire. And we will require some form of monitoring, no matter what we decide, even if we ban all fires, including propane, people are gonna still come to the beach, they're gonna light fires. I understand they've been lighting them on the dunes between Eighth and, and Ocean to sort of hide in there. So some form of, of enforcement is always gonna be necessary. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Everybody in the room wishing to speak tonight? All right, I'm gonna go.
I am. I'll call in.
All right, speak.
Thank you. I mean, there's a couple of questions, like, you know, what's the reason that we want to ban fire? This is a future council member, Parker Logan.
Thank you, Parker.
What is the, what is the reason we're banning the fires? Is it based on health or is it based on, you know, we don't want certain people to come to our community? I mean, if it's based on health, then we can just kind of turn to the American Lung Association and the California Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment would both, would both agree that exhaust from motor vehicles is the main source of outdoor air pollution, period, the end. Especially in areas that are linked in close proximity to the busy roads, like our high school that has a highway running by it, or Ocean Avenue that has two lanes going each way up and down, or scenic roads with a constant flow of vehicles, day after day, night after night, hour after hour, thousands and thousands and thousands of cars. So if we're gonna start banning things, which I'm completely against, cancel culture and a flat-out ban, maybe better regulation of things. I mean, we, we found out that automobiles were, were poor emitters long ago and, and California's made changes of those for decades. Maybe we can make changes, but not just a flat-out ban. Because if we're gonna ban based on health, then we've got to just shut down the highway and close scenic road and you can just arrive here by horse. It's ridiculous to think that, that the fires are the biggest health concern that, that Carmel by the Sea has an issue facing. So anti-ban, pro-regulation, there's lots of other ideas you can come up with other than, oh, fires forever or no fires forever, as Brandon suggested. Nothing's forever. Even a ban cannot be forever. So anyway, thank you very much. Find a better way to have a program to continue fires.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Jean McCullough?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeannie McCullough and I'm a resident of Carmel by the Sea and have a family history with the city since 1923. I sent the council a letter this last week, which I hope you were all able to read, as well as my letter to the editor in the Carmel Pine Cone. I spoke with Mike Watson today, who recently retired from the Coastal Commission staff. He told me the city has not provided any information during the pilot program that was requested to substantiate any change to the local coastal plan. He said the Coastal Commission would deny an amendment to abolish warming fires based on the lack of statistics. Trish Dally submitted a letter to the council today corroborating the fact that our air quality data, according to the EPA, is in the good category. No one wants to go back to unlimited beach fires that we had before the initial pilot program in 2016. I would like to see the council extend the current pilot program of five of the original pits purchased by the city for four months of the year. If this is abhorrent to certain members of the public, I request that the council appoint citizens to a committee to come to a compromise over the next year. And if that is too much to ask, put it to the ballot and let the people decide. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you will keep in mind all the locals who came forward and spoke over the last six years in favor of maintaining our right to a warming fire on the Carmel Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Is there anybody else wishing to speak tonight? I don't see anyone.
I don't see anyone on Zoom.
Yeah, I don't see anybody in the room. All right, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to council for questions, comments, direction. Remember, we're just getting preliminary advice, not decision tonight. Council members?
Brandon? Was, on, out of these three, was there an option for propane only?
That's a great question. So no, there wasn't an option just for propane only. Uh, the, the options that I gave were bigger picture. The options that I gave were bigger picture, and so if you chose one of those options, that could be part of your direction to say, we're going to allow fires, we're going to create a program that goes on now into perpetuity, but that program is going to be propane only. So that would be the direction we're looking for tonight, is pick, you know, pick a direction, and if you have specifics about that direction, we as staff will bring you back the correct language permits, LCP amendment language, or any other data that you need to make those decisions. So if you have specific things about a program, if you want it to look a certain way, you can have that tonight for us.
Are you aware of the Riverbeach, or the state policy?
I'm not aware of that, no.
Thanks, Brandon.
The council members, questions or comments? Karen?
Yes, I brought this because this is a compilation over years and years of everything from figuring out what kind of fire pits to have, to not wanting fire pits, to wanting more fire pits, to health damage, et cetera. But my thoughts are this, we're here tonight after countless meetings and a lot of community acrimony, which has been very difficult. It's time to make an important move forward, I believe, as far as humanity goes even, to stop burning things. We're burning things all over, and we know that burning things is causing a lot of climate impacts. This might be a baby step to stop burning on Carmel Beach, but it's a vital step to the health and the safety on our beautiful shoreline. There wasn't anything mentioned in the staff report about the health implications, really, that so eloquently were presented by our local air district manager several years ago. And our mayor, when all this started, was a former employee at the EPA, and he talked extensively about PM 2.5, which was not mentioned in the staff report. But it's really the crux of this subject. Simply put, it's the chemicals emitted by burning wood, and they're poison. They're microscopic, they're smaller than a human hair, and they go into our air, even if we're walking by, or we happen to be the family next to a fire pit, or with a downwind from a fire pit, or up 11th Avenue and have it coming in the windows, or even two blocks away from that. Burning wood produces poisons, and by allowing those wood fires on our Carmel Beach, we are exposing many innocent visitors and residents to this toxic brew. There are many families that don't realize that their children are breathing in these particulate matters, and they stay with them. Richard Stedman, our air pollution officer from Monterey Bay Area Resources District, testified many times before Foreston Beach, when I was on it, and the city council on past occasions. He told us, if we can smell smoke, then exposure is taking place. Wood smoke contains chemicals and compounds that are poisonous, he said. Wood smoke, in particular burning driftwood, which we see people do all the time, they throw it in the devices because it's convenient, produces dioxins. They're extremely toxic, persistent, and bioaccumulative compounds, meaning it never goes away, it goes into your body. Your lungs and the lungs of young children will be impacted if they're breathing smoke. He went on to say that the emissions from beach fires are similar to cigarette smoking. We've banned most cigarette smoking in public places due to the dangers of smoking and second-hand smoke and third-hand smoke. We even have a smoking ban of cigarettes on our beach and pathway already. So why would we want to continue burning wood in the fire pits? That makes no sense at this point, if you really, really understand. I cannot unsee some of this testimony from Richard Stedman. It was also noted in the staff report that in addition to finding lots of garbage in the existing devices, city crews found over 100 CO2 cartridges. Kids use those to huff and get a high. That upsets me a lot, because kids can die from huffing CO2. They're not, those cartridges were not in there because of whipped cream on shortcake, believe me. Stedman also said that while propane is cleaner than wood burning, it still does produce emissions. It is safer, and it's less emissions, but it still does produce some. And it's very difficult to tell a propane fire from a wood fire from a position on the pathway where most of the security guards remain. They don't even bring binoculars on the job, so they can't really tell what fire is what. They spend a lot of that time observing from above, and that's a lot of beach to cover. More and more people are going to the north end of the beach these days, and one man on patrol for several hours cannot walk up and down that beach. Some sort of enforcement and security will always be necessary on our beaches when they're crowded in the summers, just for safety. I mean, someone falls and hurts themselves, someone gets lost. We will always need the enforcement and security. But this would be better handled if we had the ability to put the four-wheeler or the gator with the water on it, on the beach, to cover that area. And that would also be a way of extinguishing illegal fires without them being buried, because the more, most of the illegal fires get buried in the sand, and that has to be dug out by our staff and our volunteers, and people step on those hot coals. That type of coverage was supposed to be in the pilot programs. We were supposed to have more enforcement. We have not had that. There is an argument that the Coastal Commission will not allow us to curtail fires. But with the scientific evidence and the fact that our state of California is trying to lead the nation in climate change adaptation, the Coastal Commission is eventually going to have to come into the business of protecting the environment, which is in part of their mission statement, and addressing climate change as well as access. I want access. I was delighted to see all the people from probably the Central Valley this past few weekends, when it was hotter than heck over there, being able to come over here and enjoy the day. I think that's wonderful. We don't charge for parking at our beach. People can come in and stay all day and enjoy our environment. I think it's time to move beyond wood burning. Please, let's do the right thing. I don't want to be responsible for children having asthma, older people who have COPD being harmed. And I think it's very mean-spirited to accuse people who live every night with the smoke in their homes of being selfish. They just want to be healthy. They just don't want to smell smoke, and I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, guys?
Sure.
Good, thank you.
I'll go. You know, I'll keep my comments shorter than Karen's. This is a, you know, I was on Foreston Beach with Karen as well, however many years ago that this started, and I remember that we started with not, I think Brandon said, 16, I think it was 26. I think the first proposal that came out of Foreston Beach was 26, and then Jason Burnett single-handedly reduced it to 16, and then it was 13 or 12. I don't remember what Brandon put, it was so long ago, I can barely remember how many we've had. And then it was eight or six or something, and now it's five. And every time this issue comes back to the city council, the number seems to go down by half. And, you know, we've gotten to this point, the compromise has been a long time in coming, it's where it is, it's still where I stand, you know, we're at five. I'm fine with that, and I would prefer that we just, we make it permanent at five, just like we said two years ago, we suggested two years ago.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Sometimes it's hard to know where to start, because it's been so long. You know, I guess what I'm feeling is disappointment, that a community cannot come together for a compromise. That's what I'm feeling. I respect, you know, people's opinion, you know, obviously, unlimited fires was not, is not what we wanted. And, you know, being on beach and forest, both Jeff and Karen, you know, they went through the whole, you know, reiterations, reiterations, reiterations. And, you know, I think as a community, I don't like it to be divisive. And I think, you know, we do need some compromise here. And I'm really disappointed that the two factions have not come together to come up with a solution. And that, you know, and maybe that's because it's so emotional that we're beyond that, which is also disappointing. You know, there, we only have five pits after all these years. We only have them for four months. We only have them from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and we only have them on a certain part of the beach. The people that have lived here a long time and have, I respect that they have memories of being by beach fires. I have some of those memories. And, you know, most people that have a beach fire, they don't have one every night, you know, they have it for a celebration, they have it for a birthday, they have it for a wedding. It's not something they're doing every day. We are stewards of this beach. We need to continue to have security, not just with the beach fire issue, but for people to remember to pick up their trash, to not leave their dog waste bags. So I do question whether we need better oversight of our security. Their job is not to stay on the bluffs. Their job is to be on the beach. Now, if walking up and down the beach is not what they want to do, then we need to find another security company, or we need, because the security company is just not about beach fires. So, you know, I'm disappointed in that. They should be doing a better job. And then there wouldn't, you know, they should be going up to somebody around 10 o'clock at night, if they're putting sand in the fire pit, then they need to correct that. That is their job. So, you know, I, obviously, we know how some of us feel, but I don't want to relegate this to all or none. That does not feel right to me, after this many years of going from unlimited fires to, you know, we were supposed to have 25, then we went to 12, and now we're to five. And I don't think that's unreasonable. So, but I also realize from the staff report that we really do not have, we barely have one year of data. So, you know, I'm more up to extending the pilot program and making more of an effort of the two factions to get together to come up with a solution. And that, you know, that people can come and say, look, we looked at this, we'd like to have a compromise. And that's where I'm going at this point. The air quality issue was an issue when we had unlimited fires. It is not an issue now. So that's where I'm at at this point.
Thank you, Carrie. Bobby?
Yeah. So it's funny, I read an article that was written in 2016, just a few months before I got on council, and I was interviewed for this article because I developed this little propane thing to throw on the beach, and I was quoted in there saying, you know, propane only, with the exception of a couple community fire pits. And I feel that's where we are now. However, I have pivoted a little bit on that original idea. And one of the main reasons I pivoted on that is because I did go out with those guys to clean those pits one day. And what an awful job. That is an awful, awful job that those guys have. And so for just that reason alone, I'm going to be still on the same track of propane, and I would say propane only, 24, you know, 12 months a year, south of 10th, and follow the same rules that the state of California County does at River Beach. And I think then it sends a clear message to all of our guests that come here, that you can have a beach, the same beach that's, River Beach can have the same rules as our beach here in Carmel. And I think that that, to me, is the compromise, because on one faction, it's fires, the other faction, it's no fires. So to me, the middle is a propane fire. That, to me, seems like a compromise, and that's what direction I'd like to give. Thank you, Mayor.
So I'll weigh in, I'd agree with Bobby's comments there. I think I can say that for the cost reasons of cleanup and enforcement, for the health reasons that have been expressed so well, and for general beach cleanliness, I think no fires is better. I do think, though, propane only would be a good suggestion. Carrie, I couldn't share your frustrations more with the lack of consensus in the community. It's a divided world, I guess, but I'm sorry that didn't work out. But I do think that it's better to go in the direction Bobby just said, Karen, I think you made a very articulate argument or statements about why you think it's damaging to the health. I think there's compelling reasons there. Didn't take us that long, it took us many years, actually, to figure out that smoking was bad for you. So I think honestly, this is another form of carcinogens being injected into your body. That said, though, I think we've had consensus on our direction generally, we don't have consensus, obviously, but we do have the direction out of council. Brandon, are you clear what we're talking about?
I think so, Mayor. Look at chip, I think we've got it. It seems like the majority says fires, but they have to be propane only, and that would be a permanent, not a permanent, obviously, because nothing's permanent, as someone pointed out so rightly earlier, but that would be, we would permit that in the long term, it would not be a pilot program anymore. It sounds like that's what the council would like us to bring back, is a program that's propane only.
Yes, but in the meantime, we do not want this to expire for some terrible reason and end up with fires all over the beach.
Yeah.
Is there a way to extend this for a few months, even though the pits will be removed, to give us a safety valve, so that if you get bogged down, coming back to us with propane only, we don't revert to...
Absolutely, council member, yeah. So we'll work internally with our attorneys and find the best route, whether it's extending the coastal development permit, doing an urgency ordinance, we'll come back to you in the next two months before this expires, so we can have something in place.
Because it'll probably take a year to get to the commission.
That's probably true.
Yeah, yeah. An urgency ordinance is one reading, it's maximum of, we can ask Mr. McEwen, but I think it's 90 days, then we can extend it for a maximum of, or maybe it's 30 days, then we can extend it for a maximum of 180. So, but again, we'll bring something back prior to the expiration. And Mr. McEwen?
No, I'm just, if you had a question, I'm here for that. I think you got the numbers right, though.
Thank you. Still, just under general direction, Karen?
Yes, back when we went to the Coastal Commission in Monterey, and we went there, it was going to be an appeal of our pilot program, but it was a de novo hearing that was taken over there to approve a propane only. And at the time, the commission did sort of direct us to come back to Carmel and work on that propane-type program, but it was, I think it got bogged down because the city could not supply the propane units. So this would be user-supplied propane units. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we really don't want to get into the propane business.
Okay, well, I think it's important that that be in the description, that it's user-supplied propane units only, not anything that the city is providing.
All right, well, we've had discussion, we've given direction, that's about as far as we're going to go tonight. I would like to say, though, as we go to adjourn, that yesterday was Ken White's birthday, and he failed to mention... and he failed to mention that to anybody. Man was born in 1934, I believe, so you can do the math on how old he is. He's incredibly vital individual, he's a great guy. I wish to wish him on behalf of the mayor and the city council, happy birthday, Ken, you modest son of a gun. Can't believe you didn't tell a damn soul about it. He had a CRA meeting, never mentioned it yesterday. So you can hurt Ken, but you can't hide. All right. Future agenda items? I mean, Bobby?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to put on, I'd like to have a staff report on what it costs for the city to provide phones for the city council, and how much that costs for individuals, and if we could, well, just have a report on that. Thank you.
Are you clear on that, Chip?
Yes, sir.
Or anything else?
Yes, I'm going to ask one more time, that we consider making Carmel a non-smoking city. The smoking butts, the cigarette butts all over the city were picked up by volunteers, and particularly after Car Week, it was pretty, it was pretty bad. So we do need to eventually in the future come into some discussion about that, please.
Yes, ma'am, it's still on the list, yes, ma'am.
Okey-dokey, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.